Okay, it's nine thirty-one. We will start in sixty seconds. Good morning, Doctor.
Hello. Thank you for having me virtually.
We'll be get to you as quickly as possible. I'm glad you could make it virtually.
No problem at all, sir. I appreciate you hosting me virtually. This is very fortunate we were able to do this.
Okay, sounds like everybody's in place. Appreciate everybody coming. We will call the the July, what day is this? July fifth, meeting to order at nine thirty-two PM. Hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. And we will start, I hope, with the invocation from Pastor Kenny Haven of the Potter's House, the land. Is Pastor Haven with us? He's not with us yet. Ben Johnson, would you like to lead us in the invocation, or will you toss that to Reverend Lowry?
I think today, rather than me giving about a thirty-minute sermon, you'd be smarter to use Reverend Lowry.
Okay.
Would you mind, sir?
Sure, I'll be a slant guy.
If everybody would like to stand for the invocation and then just remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, and as always, I'll remind you, if you have, if you're a member of a faith group that would like to take part in offering the invocation, just send an email to kgreen@volusia.org, and she will get you all set up. Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, again, we thank you for an opportunity to be here, assembled together to do your work, your business. We thank you for the country that we've been born in and the county that we serve in. I pray you'll give us wisdom today as we deal with the things that affect the citizens of this great county. Thank you for the staff that you've given to us and the electeds that are up here, and, Lord, we just ask that everything would honor you, we ask it in your name. Amen.
We're off to a good start. Krista, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Gertman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post.
Here.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Brower.
Here.
We do have a quorum in attendance this morning. Heather Post, it's very nice to have you back.
Good to be back. Good to see people.
We will start our meeting with public participation. I'll call your name, and if you would just come to the podium here, you'll have three minutes. Please just tell us your name and what part of the county you reside in, and on the monitor in front of you will be a timer. You'll have three minutes with a very delicate bell at the end. So first, we have Rebecca Chaffey.
It only took me a while. Hi, I'm Rebecca. I live in New Smyrna Beach. Good morning. I'm here representing Dream Green Volusia. There are a few items I'd like to address today. First, we are asking for each council member to personally demand opposition to the I-95 interchange project at Pioneer Trail. Residents have been speaking out for many years, and your duty is to represent the people who voted for you. In 2020, FDOT received over three hundred and seventy-five opposition comments. It is time to use your power to contact FDOT to oppose this disaster. I have sent you emails with FDOT contact info. Over eighty million dollars of our taxpayer money is slated for this project. For less than ten percent of that, we could acquire this land for preservation, which was in the original Florida Forever Land Acquisition Plan. This land completes Doris Leeper Spruce Creek Preserve, a preserve funded by Florida Forever and Volusia Forever, and is the only connecting piece of land left where wildlife can get in and out. Threatened wildlife species live in this critical habitat. This project directly destroys fifty-plus acres of wetlands and is critical to the health of Spruce Creek, which is impaired and is classified as an outstanding Florida waterway. We need to be saving as much of our precious wetlands as possible, as they are invaluable to cleaning our local air and water and preventing flooding and droughts. The interchange will only benefit the developers. The only purpose of the interchange is to open the area up for development. FDOT itself published that the interchange will be statistically meaningless in improving traffic. Second, starting July first this year, the state has given authority to local governments to ban smoking on beaches and public parks. Generally, the number-one piece of litter found in volunteer litter cleanups is cigarette butts, so this could have a huge impact, but it would need to be enforced with heavy fines. Please make this happen. Third, and this is for Volusia County residents, please vote in the primary on August twenty-third for council seats that are up. This is highly important for the future of our land, water, and resources. We are being overdeveloped, and many candidates are getting donations from developers. Please go to the Volusia County Supervisor of Elections website and make sure you're registered to vote. On the website, under Candidates, go to Campaign Finance Reports. There, you can get a list of who is contributing to a candidate's campaign. We need to vote in people who do not take developer money and who want to preserve our precious land, water, and natural resources. Thank you.
Paul Richardson.
Morning, Council. My name is Paul Richardson of the land. Before I start, I would like to welcome back Councilwoman Post. Glad to see you back and well with us, and I hope there's nothing wrong with Ms. Wheeler. But Independence Day was yesterday, so let's reflect on the pledge of allegiance we take here every meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We don't pledge to a person, a party, or even the government. Our pledge is to assemble that represents us and our history. Fifty stars restated, unified on a blue field. Thirteen stripes to honor our original thirteen colonies. And to the republic for which it stands. Not a democracy, a republic. The rule of law is not just about crime, but the U.S. Constitution is the law for the government and not the people. One nation. Not one globe, not one currency, and certainly not one race. Under God. Righteousness exalted in nation. Proverbs fourteen thirty-four. Only virtuous people are capable of freedom, mentioned by Franklin once, remarked. As nations become corrupt emphasis, they have more need of masters. Indivisible. This pledge is not as to everyone in this chamber as much as to the flag. We might disagree, but at the end of the day, we are all Americans. My ethnicity and ideology is not my identity. With liberty and justice for all. For all. Not just black Americans, not just white Americans, not just purple Americans, but for all Americans. Our nation stands at a critical crossroad. We need to have liberty and justice for all in order for us to move forward to a grateful and loving future. And I know I've also gone on about the Fourth of July in twenty twenty-six. I don't need to, I sent you guys, everyone, an email about it with my suggestions in written form, so I hope you take a look at that. And I would like to thank you for indulging me. I know I'm just some guy, but I hope I can bring something forward to you guys when I can. And also, I'd like to thank the staff here for their assistance when I emailed them with an image or a video. So, again, you guys have a great meeting. God bless you all, and I look forward to working with you all.
Alvin Mortimer.
Good morning, Chairman. My name is Alvin. I'm from that part of the county. Have a little satire, so please bear with me. I always think mafia has commission meetings with vote. I do not think the law or sunshine laws pertain to the mafia, though. The mafia aims for the back of your head, and no companies make any head armor big enough for mine, yet here I stand. Mr. Chairman, before I get started, we have always been civil with and around one another. I welcome you and offer the opportunity to contest this assertion and provide any evidence to the contrary. The humor mentioned was not meant to associate our commission with a crime organization, by the way. I've had recent medical issues, and humor is a way of breaking the ice and shifting gears for me. An area of public interest, no matter what side of the fence you're on, is firearms. I'd like to think the percentage is fifty-fifty, either accepting or opposing two A. Our laws that legislators created can only be manipulated and interpreted by law enforcement, not me, not the media, the mafia, or even this commission. Laws aren't supposed to be selectively enforced, but they are. Commission, I will be filing that request with Mr. Captain, as the manager advised. If I lost you, it refers to the email sent to each and every one of you this morning. I believe in karma. I also believe in equal rights, equal laws, equal punishment, equal opportunity, and most importantly, equal representation. Most seem to be unobtainable here in Volusia County. I accept our differences of opinion, and I welcome and invite any positive change. I have made public records requests with the chairman that have not been engaged. It is my understanding the clerk can forward to the correct department. Feel a more than reasonable amount of time has passed. Mr. Brower, please acknowledge, answer, or forward any outstanding public records request authored by myself to you. I copied one example and forwarded to our governor, DeSantis, this morning. The outstanding, unacknowledged, and unanswered PRR specifically was dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Perhaps IT can audit or assist you. Furthermore, I have in the past requested records from the prior chair, and he forwarded to the correct person or department. There are occasions when we, the people, are unsure of the proper department. In my case, I explained my intent and expectations of answers to questions involving internal policies of the county. Are you just disobeying sunshine laws, or are you misinterpreting them, or am I mistaken? Ignorance to the laws is no excuse. Imagine how many people would claim not knowing the speed limit just to avoid a ticket. You don't have to like me, but you have to represent me. What you signed on to do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And just for the record, all of his requests have been forwarded to the proper people within the county to answer his requests. Next, we have Doug Hall.
Okay, got it. Members of the county council, county staff, guests. I am Doug Hall. I'm an advocate. I live in Daytona Beach. Advocate for a lot of different things. Today, I'm here regarding transportation. Each of you have in front of you a copy of a resolution that was passed by the Florida Council of the Blind at its convention in, I think it was June fifth, regarding paratransit, and that's what I want to talk about. Feel comfortable, I'm not going to read all these papers. I just want to talk a little bit about what's in the resolution and why the resolution was adopted by the Florida Council of the Blind. If you've paid attention to what's happening in terms of mass transportation, VOTRAN, and not only VOTRAN, but all of the providers around the country and the state are having increased problems in recruiting and retaining drivers. It's a problem. It's especially been bad since the beginning of the pandemic. During the pandemic, we saw huge waiting lists of people having to take transportation. In some cases, not here, thank goodness, but in some cases, denial of services of some people because of the problems they were having. We are concerned. We're concerned because there's long waiting lists, and you may have a ride scheduled, say, for one o'clock and not be picked up until after two o'clock. And that's a real problem, and part of that is because they just don't have the drivers they need. One of the things that we are concerned about is that people are having trouble getting around and having, and there are ways to deal with this problem. We're also calling, and by the way, I'm mentioning it to you because you fund VOTRAN. The problem is with the system we have, and you know it's very expensive. We're, if you look at the resolution, we're talking about implementing ride sharing. Ride sharing is a huge, can be a huge cost-saving. I think VOTRAN and the other systems need to consider that. Money is a problem in terms of taxes. We're also calling on the Florida Transportation Disadvantaged Commission to gather information about ride share. I think I'm being told shut up. Just to end, we commend counties like Pinellas, Duval, and Broward for doing ride sharing and also doing same-day pickups, which is something that we need to consider. Thank you very much, and I'll stop.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for coming, and we will be in contact with you. Karen Clark.
Morning, everybody. Karen Clark. I live in Glenwood. I'm here for a couple of reasons. Nothing bad. Number one, signs on Grand Avenue in Glenwood, we have an unusual area because we have lots of hills. And when I asked another time to please put a sign that says Hill Blocks View, you guys did it right away. Only it needs to say Hill Blocks Views for the next two miles. Because actually, this weekend, I almost lost the front end of my truck coming outside of my driveway because the people speeding, because they're training for NASCAR, up Grand Avenue, just about sheared almost, it felt like my truck was going to be gone. He was a good driver. He moved over. But if there could be a little bit more signs, if anything, that says for the next couple of miles, even if I'll go with one of your guys to drive up the avenue, I'll come in the other direction so he can see when somebody wants to pass somebody, there's a person there. But that's about it for that, and to keep it at thirty-five miles an hour, it changes miles per hour within two miles. It goes to thirty-five, goes to forty, goes to thirty-five. I mean, it makes no sense. Well, anyway, the other thing I'm looking for is there a tourist council? Because myself and five other people want to bring a cat show into Volusia County. We're looking at the fairgrounds, but we need some help with hotels and other things that I know somebody here in the county knows of an agency that works with the county. Last thing is business cards for the animal control board, not with our own personal names on it, but with the information for the spay and neuter program, because we see people all the time, and we all network. And there's nothing wrong with getting business cards that, for visually impaired people, also not ten-point type, you know, make it so that people can actually see the telephones on there for the Wellness Wednesday, if it's still called that. It gets the name changed where you can go and bring in a vet. You can bring your animal into a vet. They can look it over and then pass it on, either get it spayed or neutered, get their shots in a microchip. It's really, this county is amazing. It was the first county in the country to have a, what is it, when you have to leave your area and because a storm is coming, the Volusia County Fairgrounds and other places are where you could leave and bring your pets to and be safe. And you were the first in the whole country to have that. I just wanted to remind you, because people forget. And we're happy that the spay and neuter bucks is coming back. And we're just putting a lot of good taxpayer dollars to work, and you can't commend them enough. Thank you, guys. And it really means that they can help us with the tourist information.
Thank you, and congratulations to staff. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Item number one, does anybody have an item they would like to pull for discussion or a vote? Councilman Lowry moves to accept the consent agenda as a whole, seconded by Ben Johnson. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And that takes us to item three, presentation of the medical examiner annual report, and Dr. Foulter is with us here virtually. We appreciate you coming, being with us. And I'll just hand it over to you.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone. First off, just for everyone watching, I had a bit of a family emergency. My mother fell, so I'm actually in Roanoke, Virginia now, and happy that the county's IT people, including Kevin Captain and his group, could get this. could get this together on incredibly short notice, so I really appreciate that. And everything's going well here, thank goodness. So, if you'd go to the next slide, please. This is our annual report, just a brief review of what the medical examiner office does. We do not take jurisdiction over everyone that dies. We do not autopsy everyone that dies. However, it is a mark of distinction for this county and my office that we autopsy 8% of all the people that die in the county. Normally, that number is well below 5%. So we're doing a lot of work and a lot of investigation that doesn't occur in less well-funded places. So that is good news and a mark of distinction. So when you look at my data, it's very important to note that it only represents cases that fall under our jurisdiction. If someone has brain cancer or a heart attack, if it's not related to any foul player trauma, which it often is not, of course, that would not be our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction is strictly defined in Florida Code 406. Just a brief background on COVID. It was our jurisdiction as a quote threat to public health per code. That was modified in August of 2020. So cases that are COVID-related are no longer automatically my jurisdiction. And that's a change from last year's data, and that influences the numbers you see to a degree. Next slide. So, this is the executive summary. If you memorize one slide or look at one slide, this is the one to look at. Good news is, cases are down slightly. They're actually mostly down due to natural death from COVID. We're not taking those cases, but also even global natural death is down from COVID. Unfortunately, as I mentioned to you last year, the increased overdoses, which I think are related to COVID, no way to absolutely prove that, are still up. Now, the good news is, they only went up about 15% over 2020, which, as you recall, from 2019 to 2020, we went up 75%. So the curve is slowing down significantly. And I can tell you, looking at a month-to-month data, it seems like we're slightly trending downward now, and we're eventually going to reach some baseline, which, of course, I can't predict. I expect it'll be halfway or somewhere between our 2018 numbers and our 2020 numbers. Not surprisingly, we're no different from anywhere else in the country. 85% or 71% of our cases this year were fentanyl involved. That's slightly down from 2020. Interestingly, this year, cocaine and methamphetamine are being combined with fentanyl. That happened to a smaller degree last year, but this year, a large number of our overdoses involve all three drugs, cocaine, fentanyl, and methamphetamine. And if you look at the average age of a person that dies in this county, that's going to become really important later, and the public can gain a lot from learning about this. Turnaround time is something I always like to talk about. This is also, I think, a mark of distinction. I warned you last year that our turnaround time was going to increase, unfortunately, because of lab slowdown services. It should be obvious, but we cannot sign out and finalize a drug overdose without the toxicology report. That's simply impossible. So the toxicology lab directly influences my office's turnaround time. They suffered greatly with the pandemic, with both supplies and personnel hiring. The good news is, they've improved, they've hired the people, they've got the reagents, they've got the test tubes. So for 2021, our turnaround time did go from 23 days up to 35. I'm happy to report, as soon as the lab got everything squared away, which happened in about March of this year, my office worked diligently and completely eliminated the backlog in a couple of weeks. Therefore, turnaround time is back down to our standard 23 days. Just for the public's knowledge and to remind you guys in council, NAME, the National Association of Medical Examiners, really wants us to be below 90 days. So we are really doing very well with our turnaround time. We're doing excellent there. For your purposes, homicides, police-involved fatalities, and traffic accidents had no significant change from 2020 to 2021. Cremation approvals, which are what we look at to make sure someone can be cremated. Obviously, if someone's going to be cremated, the body is damaged to a degree that we can no longer examine it. So people may not know this, the medical examiner's office has to evaluate the death certificate and potentially medical records to make sure that body can be cremated. If it can't be, then we bring it in and either do an autopsy or an external exam, and then it can be cremated. So we never stop a cremation, we may delay it slightly. But we catch a lot of subtle injuries on these cases. We catch a lot of, interestingly, unidentified overdoses on these cases. So it's a valuable thing we do, and it's, of course, required by law. The good news is, we do evaluate and at least look at 86% of the people that die in the county. Most places are doing really well to get above 50%. So we're autopsying a lot of cases and we're evaluating a lot of cases. So at every juncture, we are improving outcomes. Next slide. This is just kind of the jurisdictional thing. The orange is the accept and the blue is the decline. You can see we're just minimally down from 2020. You can see what COVID did to us, obviously, just by looking at this slide. Next slide. This shows the drop from 2020 to 2021. You can see the vast majority of that drop are the medical record review cases, which is just an evaluation of the medical records. Most of that drop is related to those COVID cases. You can also see in the autopsy section, a very minimal increase. That increase is related to overdoses going slightly up. Next slide. This is kind of busy, but it does show the drop in the natural deaths we evaluated in blue from 2020 to 2021, once again, related to COVID. And part of that, COVID deaths are going down, and part of that is my office isn't taking jurisdictions over them. So it's a combination of things. Suicides, and this is probably what people always ask, suicides are kind of at baseline, homicides are at baseline, and we had a slight increase, of course, in our accidentals. Those are almost all overdoses that are related. Next slide. Cremations are down, once again. This is a very nice global snapshot of what's going on with fatalities in the county because a lot of people get cremated, and you can see they're down basically to baseline before COVID. So that's good news. Next slide. This is, you know, it's good news and it's bad news. I was hoping to report to you in 2021 that overdoses were going to be dropping, but they're not. But the great news is, they haven't gone up as much. So we don't have that terrifying 75% increase. It's about a 15% increase, which means we're on the right path. Those societal safety nets and whatnot are working, in my opinion. So things are improving. And of course, things are getting better with people getting out. The lockdowns are largely over, so that's all helping. Next slide. This just compares with motor vehicle accidents and collisions. You can see the elevation in overdoses, and MVA's, motor vehicle collisions, basically are unchanged. Next slide. This one, I think, will be fascinating to people, and I hope it's alarming. I hope it is enlightening. Because when you think of overdose, a lot of people probably think of young people, teenagers, 20-year-olds, partying. That's not what this looks like in our county. And you're going to see a pie graph later that our overdoses go well up into the 60s and 70s, mostly the 60s. But our average overdose in this county is someone, it's funny, I'll be 44 this year. So it's basically me, a Caucasian man, middle-aged, 44. We have a small number, I mean, only 10% or less than 30. So this is, interestingly, in our county, a problem with really my generation and generations around me. Cocaine and methamphetamine, as we said, are involved. I believe this is related to this number. I believe that young white men or middle-aged white men abusing these drugs are putting themselves at extreme risk because of this deadly combination. As you know, as you get older, heart disease continues to become worse on a population basis, and these middle-aged men are dying from a combination of heart disease and these drugs. So no one should do drugs ever. However, if you're a middle-aged person, you really need to think about the drugs you're getting in this county because they're a combination that has extreme lethality, particularly if you're male. Next slide. And this is the pie graph, and if you start at the 12 o'clock position, you can see we've kind of bookended from 10 years of age up to 69. You can see that teenage overdoses are an incredibly small number, incredibly small. Tragic, but small. Over 69, very small. And then you have this massive load of people in the middle-aged bracket that are overdosing. And you can see it extends significantly into the 60 to 69-year-old category. Why is that? That generation grew up, some of them partially, in a time period in the country where drugs were more commonplace. So they're used to it. They may have had medical procedures where they were given prescription drugs and has addiction problems that way. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of this going on. Our community outreach efforts have also allowed us to probably capture more of these overdoses in the elderly populations. I think in the old system, we did not communicate as well with law enforcement. My very outstanding operations manager, Carla Orozco, has developed a really outstanding program to put detectives and law enforcement through, which we're doing with the sheriff now and continue with other municipalities, to make sure they're looking for these subtle overdoses. And it's very important to document these because it shows how serious the problem is. Next slide. When I interviewed, I told you I'd be an educator. I've done everything I can in light of two things, COVID and the physical limitations of my office. I don't have a great office to have, let me rephrase that. I don't have a good autopsy suite, physical plant to bring in students. I really want to do things. I have things set up with Embry-Riddle, I have things set up with Stetson, we've talked to Daytona State. We're going to reach out to all those local colleges once I get that new building. Right now, my facility is just a bit dangerous. It's a small morgue facility, and having a lot of students around significantly increases their risk. With that said, we're still doing med students, we're still doing the master's program with UF, we're doing the paramedics when we can, we're doing the new detective academy, we're working with the sheriff's office academy. We're doing a great, the new sheriff's office deputies that are being trained are getting an outstanding lecture series from Mrs. Orozco, plus real-world, very challenging, basically hypothetical, acted-out situations with mannequins where they're learning to look for things. So those people coming in now are at a great advantage over deputies in the past in evaluating these complicated medical legal deaths. One more thing, and I know I've gone on a little while, I want you to know about, is the International Forensic Medicine Association. This is a local conference. It is an international conference. We have people from the Caribbean, from Europe that come. This is a medical legal death investigation conference that attracts approximately 250 to 300 participants that come to Beachside, Daytona, to hang out at a nice hotel and get high-quality medical legal death investigation credits in conference time. So that's a wonderful thing. It's been going on for about 10 years, and my office and the sheriff have supported it for that time period. I believe that's about it. I think I have one more slide, the summary. So, in summary, we are beating all external benchmarks. I'll remind you, turnaround time is 21 days, NAME wants it under 90. So we're still affected by the COVID overdose increase. That's what I think it is, of course. I don't know when that's going to drop down to baseline, but I think we are on the right path. So I think that is good news. And that is pretty much all I have for you. I'll entertain any questions you have at all.
Counsel, questions for Dr. Foulter? Barb Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank you for very thorough report that answered a lot of the questions and broke a lot of it down. Because I was questioning about the COVID impact and the overdose, and you've certainly taken that to the nth degree. So there are no further questions, just to say thank you for all you do and for your focus on the things you know we are concerned about and what we're hearing concerns about in the community. So you definitely have your finger on the pulse of that. And I appreciate, I know you went to Catalyst and presented to our young people, and I think that also is just a great way of letting the community know the work that's being done by the county and staff and the caring that we're starting at the earliest age of planting those seeds out there to let them know which way not to go and what the outcomes are if those are choices that are made. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Catalyst was a wonderful experience.
Heather Post.
Dr. Foulter, I know I give you accolades every time you come and speak, but this presentation, I would say, the most fantastic out of all the presentations that you've provided in the past, certainly. I just really want to commend you for not only taking our medical examiner's office from one point to just bringing it to a level beyond where we needed to be to be checking the boxes. And you have really, really moved that division forward, and I cannot commend you enough for that. All of the different things that you've been doing above and beyond checking the boxes. Councilwoman Gertman mentioned with the overdoses and really getting out in the community, all of this education within the community, certainly in law enforcement. I know, I used to teach the detectives academy. So, and that's terrific that you're actually going out and doing that and that you're talking to the deputies and letting them know what to expect on death calls because a lot of times you're just thrown out there.
Yes.
The fact that you are really just taking the lead and pushing these things forward. And I also want to say the fact that staff has allowed him, George and Suzanne, that he is being given the rein to make these changes and to really move that division forward. Commend everybody on that aspect. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I will briefly point out for the public that a lot of this statistical analysis was made possible and was significantly easier because the county was gracious enough to get us a modern database, which is working beautifully. It is a picture of efficiency. My very young and computer-savvy staff jumped on it immediately, and we can do some great analysis work virtually. I'm unfortunately going to be trapped in Virginia with my mother for a little while, but I'll be able to fully service all my cases. Obviously, I can't do autopsies, but any sort of paperwork I need to be doing can quite literally be done from Roanoke, Virginia, right now. And so there'll be no delay in anything.
Heather Post, I couldn't agree with your analysis more. And the historical comparison of what's occurring in your office now is, there's really no comparison. It's incredible. We will all be glad when you get in the new facility. And I believe we'll probably see George out there on weekends helping to lay block.
Or me, I'll hobble out there.
Dr. Lowry.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you wanted to motion to accept this report. I'll make that. I'll make that.
Okay. Motion to accept by Lowery, second by Johnson. Just a quick question for you, Dr. Fulter.
Yes, sir.
There was a slide, cases of manner of death that showed accidents way up. Did you say those accidents were mostly drug related?
Absolutely. Nearly all of them, sir. Our homicides are virtually the same. Actually, interestingly, by name standards, I don't think in 2021, we actually had a police involved fatality at all. We've had one in several in 2022, but in 2021, we had none. The homicides, like I said, are virtually the same. The traffics are the same. So basically, every accidental over, the accidents are increased strictly because of the overdoses. It's not uncommon for us to get four or five overdoses a day in my office. And as I said, the drugs are getting stronger and there's an increasingly older population that is using them, unfortunately.
Stronger and more dangerous with the mixtures.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Did I also hear you say that you're seeing an increase in heart disease?
Not particularly, no. The heart disease is at a natural baseline. We're seeing that because people happen to be abusing drugs. And since you asked, I'll expand a little bit on that. The combination of the cocaine and the methamphetamine, which are stimulants, plus the cocaine, do very bad things to people with heart disease, if that makes sense. The stimulant drugs that increase blood pressure do very poorly with heart disease. So someone with an enlarged heart and coronary artery disease, that a 45 year old man who's heavy or obese, they're going to do much, much, much worse than a healthy 20 year old.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
I thought for a second we just lost you, but yes, that makes sense. Thank you for the clarification and thank you for the good report. We hope for the very best for your mother. We're glad you were able to get there where the mothers are important.
Thank you. I appreciate it. She's doing very well. We're in a good spot.
No other comments or questions from the council? All in favor of accepting this report? Say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero. And that brings us to item four of the contract amendment for the medical examiner's services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, County Counsel. Mark Swanson, here I am, Director of Public Protection. Item number four is an amendment to the existing medical director's contract. The amendment includes a 5% increase for compensation of previous years, increased costs of medical supplies and medical testing. Obviously, the cost of everything has gone up and there as well. So the amendment also includes an increase of $150,000 to reflect the change of responsibility for transportation of decedents. So the medical director is actually taking responsibility in that and taking that transport piece over. So that will be included in that as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Heather Post. And that cleared up all the names I had on my board here. Any questions from council? And all in favor of approving this expenditure increase of $277,848? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item five, ordinance number 2022-21, amending section 86271 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for an extension of COVID-19 administrative leave.
Motion to approve.
And the motion to approve is by Johnson, second by Lowery. But since you made the long trip up, would you please, would you please inform us a little bit?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, council members. Dana Page-Pender, Human Resources, here today requesting approval of the ordinance 2022-21, amending the Code of Ordinances regarding the COVID administrative leave section. At the 18th, 2022 council meeting, you approved administrative leave for COVID purposes for people who either test positive or are required to isolate or quarantine in accordance with CDC guidelines. That leave expired June, July 1st, 2022. This amendment would not provide additional leave, but would allow anyone who has not yet used that leave to use it through December 31st, 2022.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion from council?
I have.
Heather Post.
So I know we've all had a lot of questions on the COVID leave. So this is the set amount of time that we're allowing as the 40 hours. But I'm noticing it says required to miss work in accordance with CDC guidelines. If someone ends up having to take more than 40 hours, are we not, are they having to use their personal leave? Not covering that if we're telling them they have to stay home?
So the current guidelines don't have them staying home longer than the 40 hours. But if they, for some reason, they extend it past the 40 hours, yes, it's a personal leave.
If it happened on more than one occasion is what I'm getting at in the three year time period or the one year period or?
Yes.
Do we know how many employees that that's happened to or maybe?
We're constantly analyzing.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we continue to analyze because if we have people that are having to use their own leave time when we as an employer are not allowing them to come in due to the health standards, then I know we've talked about this a lot, but just reiterating. So just making sure it's still in the discussion. And I would like to know if we do have any outstanding employees that have that number up on that. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I do.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote to approve the extension of the COVID-19 administrative leave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Item six is a quasi judicial hearing, rezoning a series of parcels, approximately 12,056 square feet in size located on the south side of Whiting Way, Edgewater.
Good morning, Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. And joining me today is Patricia Smith, your Planning Manager, and Carol McFarland, Division Director for Planning and Development Services. What you're seeing here today is a request to rezone. Two parcels are located within a existing mobile home park. The history behind this is somewhat convoluted. The property was developed initially as a mobile home park and through a series of legal issues, there was a court determination that a portion of it was a legal subdivision and it was sold out as lots as opposed to a mobile home park. And let me clarify the difference is that a mobile home park is where you have one ownership of the land. They basically lease out, rent space so that that way you can move the part of your mobile home in there. So therefore, we have different standards for that type of operation as opposed to a platted subdivision where you have fee simple ownership and a mobile home is established there. Also, there's differences in the zoning that is currently there. MH1, which does not allow for certain site built or modular units as opposed to MH5, which provides for a diversity of type of homes that can be constructed there. So what we're looking, doing here today is to help rectify an issue which is keeping a property owner from being able to construct on their site that this is rezoning. The council may remember that several years ago, we came through with a code amendment to hopefully address these. And so we're going to be continuing to look at this to see what can be done to ensure that the individual property owners within this area as well as the county are not going to be facing this issue if they decide to use a modular home as opposed to a mobile home or these types of things. But this is a time sensitive issue with the property owner. They would like to get going on it, so that's why you see it going forward. It went to your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission with a recommendation of approval from staff. At the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, there was no comment against this project or, excuse me, against this request, and the board recommended unanimously for approval. If you have any questions for staff, we're here.
Heather Post.
Actually, I was still up from before. You can negate. Thank you so much.
Clay, these are, these are going to be site built homes, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
Is there sewer in the area or is it septic?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would assume it's sewer.
There's sewer there? I was just curious. Good.
All right.
All right. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to, motion to approve by Robbins, second by Lowery? Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. That takes us to item seven, a budget resolution, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Septic Systems Upgrade Grant Revenue of $1 million. All ones, $1.1 million. You're not Clay. Ginger.
Good morning, Ginger Adair, Environmental Management Director. And this agenda item is to accept grant funding from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to assist homeowners in the DeLeon Springs area with upgrading their septic systems to a nutrient reducing system. Excuse me. So just a little background, in 2016, the state legislature passed the Florida Springs and Aquifer Protection Act and that identified what they called outstanding Florida springs. And we are lucky enough in Volusia County to have three of those. But it also said that the state had to develop these basin management action plans, identify where nutrients were coming from, and then try to find ways to reduce those nutrients. So in Volusia, all of our springs have a B map and within 20 years of implementation or adoption of those B maps, the state rules say that all traditional septic systems on lots less than one acre in size and within a certain area, they call it the priority focus area, have to be converted either to a central sewer system or a septic system that reduces nutrients. So there's two different choices there. Excuse me. And the way that the DEP is judging which choice is they're asking the counties to do a wastewater feasibility analysis, which basically says in an area, what is the likelihood of sewer coming to that area during the plan period? Or is it an area where sewer may never be available or quite a ways down the road? And so to implement that, the state provided grant funding for the counties to do those wastewater feasibility analysis. And then they created a grant program to help folks who are not going to be able to switch to central sewer to upgrade their systems. So all of this is a DEP requirement and we're here as the county to help folks access this money, make it cheaper for them to eventually comply with these new rules. So there are basically three things that have to happen for someone, for an area to be eligible. One is that the DEP has to determine that septic systems are at least 20% of the nutrients in that spring shed. You can see here our three springs, all of those. Thank you. My apologies. I don't know about you guys, but there were fireworks in my neighborhood until 4:30 this morning. So this is not my best. Sorry. If I say anything really stupid, we're going to chalk it up to sleep deprivation. The second thing is, has that wastewater feasibility analysis been complete? And so for our three springs, that has happened in two of those. The third, Blue Spring, we have the funding availability. That's going to happen on next council meeting and Mike Ulrich will bring that item for you. And then if you have done the wastewater feasibility analysis, are there areas that are not going to be reached by central sewer? So for the two springs that we've done the analysis, that is true only in DeLeon. So in Gemini Springs, that conversion is all going to happen as sewer and Mike has been working really hard with the city of DeBury to make those projects come to fruition. So all that means is that this $1.1 million is only eligible for folks in the DeLeon Springs priority focus area. So right now, the grant that we have, just for DeLeon Springs. Hopefully, when we finish the Blue Spring wastewater feasibility analysis, then the state will make funding available to help those folks as well. So this map is just to show where this money may be spent. So the larger sort of peanut shaped red line, that is the spring shed of DeLeon Springs. And then hopefully it's easier to see on your screen, there's a green cross hatched area, which is a little bit smaller. Hard to see on the big screen. That is the priority focus area and that's the area that the DEP has determined is the most critical to the impact to the actual spring. And then all of those dots are parcels that are less than one acre that are single or multifamily residents and/or mobile homes. So that's about 3,000 parcels that may be eligible if they choose to upgrade their septic system to one with nutrient reducing properties. Again, this is completely voluntary. The funding is just being made available to folks who are wanting to do that work now. At some point, like if they have to get a permit to repair their system, they'll be required by the Department of Health who issues these permits to go to a nutrient reducing system. But the funding is to help folks do that now. So single or multifamily residents are eligible. They have to have an existing conventional septic system. They have to be a lot less than an acre in the priority focus area. This grant funding will allow up to $7,000 per system to upgrade to a nutrient reducing system. And the money is actually payable directly to the septic contractor or the installer. The work has to be permitted and receive final approval from the Department of Health. So we'll be working very closely with the Health Department. So our total grant award is the 1.1 million. They made $10 million available and there are nine counties that were eligible. So that's how you get to this lots of ones number. And for us, that would equal, if everyone took advantage of the full $7,000, that would equal about 149 upgrades. I put this slide in here just because this always comes up, the question of how much does it cost to do these upgrades? So I reached out to Roxanne Grover from the Florida Onsite Wastewater Association and she reached out to installers in our county to get some comparisons about costs. So on the far left is a traditional system. The initial cost, and a lot of this depends on your site, right? But initial cost, 7,500 to $12,000. And then annually, you know, it depends on the kind of septic tank owner you have, right? But annually, maybe 250 to 500 in operating costs. That's if you get it pumped regularly, et cetera. The middle is an aerobic treatment system. So that's a system that reduces nitrogen through a series of pumps and adding oxygen into the system. So the initial costs of those vary from maybe 17,500 to 22,000 dollars. And then they have quite a significant annual operating costs. And the reason for these annual costs is because those have to be inspected regularly and they have a lot of moving parts. They have pumps and require electricity and those sorts of things. Then there's a third option, and this is also a nutrient reducing system. It's called an in-ground biofilter. There are a lot of longer names for it. But in general, what that is, is that underneath the drain field of this septic system is a type of cellulose media that actually uptakes the nitrogen. And so they're cheaper than the aerobic treatment systems. So the initial cost is somewhere around 9,500 dollars plus or minus, of course, depending on the site. And then the annual costs are relatively low. Same thing with a traditional system, you have to pump it out regularly. But the drain field itself, it's very, it's passive system, right? So once it's installed, there's nothing, there's no pumps or aeration or electricity or any of that. So if folks are moving from a traditional system, and let's say, for instance, the reason they're even talking about this is because they have to get a repair permit, right? So they have to do something. So. permit, right? So they have to do something. So, um, the seven thousand dollars would be eligible for either of the two, the middle or the right-hand column. And if their site is conducive enough for the in-ground biofilter, um, that's really not that much more cost than a traditional si- system, but they are eligible for the seven thousand dollars. Um, if they have to go with an aerobic treatment system, the seven thousand that they are, would be eligible for would reduce the cost to somewhere in the range of what a traditional system would cost. Does that all make sense? Okay, so the program will run roughly September. We're, we're gonna hire a consultant to manage the grant program. So, um, as soon as we hire the consultant through October of two thousand twenty-four, like I said, we're gonna hire a consultant to be the grant administrator. So to handle all the applications, make sure that, um, Health Department permits are all in place, all of that stuff, and then handle the actual payments. So we'll do a request for qualifications for that. Um, then, um, the, we with the consultant will develop an application and they, and lay out the whole process and we're going to work closely with the Department of Health, the installers, homeowners, the, um, DeLeon Springs Association to, um, get the word out and manage the whole process through the grant payment. And then again, how we'll get the word out. Um, we've identified the parcels, so we're gonna do a direct mail to parcels that we believe are eligible. We'll do targeted social media. We'll work with the community association, um, work with the installers and their organizations and then, you know, we'll do printed media to the Health Department. And that's it. If you have any questions?
Barbara Gertman.
So. I'm glad to see us. This opportunity, um, to support the residents of DeLeon Springs. Not real happy with the, with the numbers, especially option two and three and, um, the funds aren't eligible for the traditional, correct?
Correct. It's to, to move from a traditional to a nutrient-reducing, correct?
So my question probably has been each time, and I'm probably not getting the answer I'm, I'm looking for, which is always, of course, yes, there is. Is, are there additional funds available for someone that you say may not be eligible for option three, right? And, and has like a ten thousand dollar or more impact? Are there any other grants or, or programs that could be available, um, to support that, that resident?
So, uh, we, we talked about that last time that I brought this forward and, um, Carmen Hall in our Community Services, um, Department looked into that and the answer is, is sort of, it depends, um, on a case-by-case basis, right? So any of the other programs that folks might be eligible for have income requirements and, so they would have to be looked at sort of on an individual basis. So, um, yes, maybe for some people.
That's fair. I mean, cause again, most of our programs, you have to qualify to some degree and demonstrate the need. So I think that's the greatest concern is where that need is. Is there a way to support that resident in getting, getting that done if it's what we're requiring or the state's requiring?
State, yes.
The state, what the state is requiring and we're giving what support is available and making all options available. So, um, so I, I appreciate that and, and with that, I'll make the motion.
To approve.
Yes, I'll make the mo-
Motion to approve, uh, by Barb. Second one was by Ben Johnson, the second by Ben Johnson. And, uh, discussion, Heather Post.
Yes, so, um, I'm reading that staff plans on initiating the program from September two thousand twenty-two to October two thousand twenty-four. So, um, does that mean that everyone must have the, must have the new septic by October twenty-four installed? Or does that mean the process must start by then?
The, the way we understand it from the DEP right now is that we would wanna have all of the payments, which would, so payment would be made to the installer upon completion and upon verification from the Health Department that all the inspections are. So right now, what we're saying is that they would be complete by that deadline. We have, um, heard from the state that maybe the deadline is a little flexible. Uh, so what we'll do is if we get to say, you know, six months out from the, the deadline and we still have funds available, then we would work with the DEP to extend it.
So that sort of rolls into my next question. Um, it was a hundred and twenty-something residents out there? Is that what you said? One twenty-seven or one forty-nine?
One forty-nine. The, the funding would, would pay for one forty-nine.
Okay. And that's basically dividing the one-one-one-one-one divided by that many gives you seven thousand for each person.
Right. So we did set aside, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars for the consultant to manage the program and then the balance, we basically divided by seven thousand and you get a hundred and forty-nine.
And I know, uh, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of, uh, efforts for outreach written down and discuss, um, but that's a hundred and forty-seven people who it is applicable to. And, you know, one of the concerns that we have are maybe you might have people that might not be able to afford the additional. So they might not want to start the process if they don't quite have to. And I don't see the hundred and forty-seven, um, running out to replace their systems if they don't have to and certainly if they don't have the money right now. Um, so what I'm wondering is, since it is the, the grant and it is that amount of money and we're only saying seven thousand because we're dividing it by the number of people that it's applicable to, what if we end up with half of that number applying or a third of that number applying? What, what happens to the rest of the funds? And could it possibly then go back to raise the amount that was given initially to the, the ones that are getting it done?
So, uh, no, the seven thousand is the maximum that the state will allow us to provide for any one property owner. So, uh, if we get near the end and we don't have folks that have taken advantage of it because of all the reasons you say, right? They don't have the, the rest. Now, keep in mind that most people are gonna do this because they have to do something and they're going to incur a cost regardless. So this is intended to offset that cost. So, um, but if we get somewhere down the line and we haven't had folks take advantage of it for one reason or another, that's when we'll go to the state and ask, you know, can we extend the program? And, and they may, you know, the, these are relatively new grants, right? And so we may learn something along the way, right? We may learn that ten thousand is the sweet spot and, and we'll hear that from talking with folks. Like, oh, if it was another couple thousand, I could do it.
Right.
And we can talk to the state. But as it's written right now, seven thousand is the maximum that we're allowed to provide. Um, and, and we'll kind of reassess if folks aren't able to take advantage.
One quick question. Yeah, I, I think you said, if I heard you right, if they have to go to a nutrient reduction system, um, who, who's making that determination? Is it the property owner or somebody else? Which system you choose?
Um, it is, uh, the, the Department of Health is really going to be where they'll work out the details of what kind of system. So the in-ground systems require a larger area because, um, not to get too far in the weeds, but, you know, a normal drain field is required to be whatever size it is by state law. And if you're going to use the in-ground media, then it has to be one foot bigger on all sides, right? Because you over excavate, you put in this media, then you put in your drain field and then you, you backfill it. So, and you have to have a certain depth to water table. So all of those things are going to be figured out at the time of the permit application with the septic installer and the Health Department confirming that they meet all of the requirements for the in-ground system. So if someone has to go to a nutrient-reducing system, right? Because the state says if you're less than a half acre or less than an acre in the PFA, you have to do that when you change out your system, then, um, the installer and the Health Department will work together to figure out what is the appropriate system for that site.
Okay, thank you. And this is a, uh, don't go away, but this is a public hearing and we do have one member of the, uh, public, Amy Manizzi, of representing the DeLeon Springs Community Association. Amy?
Good morning. Amy Manizzi, DeLeon Springs Community Association, DeLeon Springs. We've been talking about this with our citizens since two thousand eighteen because we knew it was coming. We knew the basin management action plan was gonna be a reality. And so we have a quarterly newsletter that we talk about this every time. We bring it up at every single meeting and we've helped our citizens understand this is, this is real. And specifically for those on property less than one acre, eventually they will have to retrofit. It's, it's just the way it is in the basin manag- management action plan. We also understand that, um, as stewards of this area, it's important for us to protect the water quality in our spring and we all love our spring. Our community was named after the spring. So we have a lot of citizens that want to comply with this. They want to be part of this, but from the beginning, it's always been how can we afford it and will there be grants? So we were so excited in, I believe it was March, when this became, uh, when it came before county council and y'all voted for environmental management to pursue this grant. And we wanna thank Ginger and Clay for doing that and for going to bat for our citizens. And this is gonna go a long way to helping people. Um, so we are definitely in favor of it. We ask you to vote for it because it's important to our citizens and it's gonna make all the difference in whether they can stay in their homes and they can afford to comply with this because we do want to protect our spring. We do want to reduce pollution and we do wanna cooperate. And certainly to that end, the DeLeon Springs Community Association is available to help facilitate these meetings and this communication. Like I said, we've been doing it since two thousand eighteen, but now it's gonna start affecting people for real. And so, uh, we wanna definitely continue to help get out the word, cooperate with the county, do anything that we can to help our citizens know that, um, that the county is behind us and helping us, uh, to, to conform to these requirements. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? And I'll call for the vote. We have a, a motion by Gertman, second by Johnson. All in favor of, uh, approving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And that takes us to, uh, item eight. And here it comes now. It's the General Fund, Votran, Economic Development, Fire Rescue District, Ocean Center Parking Garage and MSD five-year forecast for fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-five and twenty-six. Mr. Van Cleek?
Good morning, Council. Aaron Van Cleek, Management and Budget Director. Since you just named all the funds, I won't repeat them. Save me some breath. So this is the continuation of our five-year forecast presentations that we started, uh, last meeting. Last meeting, we brought you, uh, Library Port, Echo, Volusia Forever, uh, Mosquito Control and EMS. Uh, today we'll go over the funds that you mentioned. And then at the next meeting on July nineteenth, we will be setting our, uh, millage rates for the trim notices and the first public hearing date, and then you will be getting the recommended budget, budget from the county manager. As a reminder, e- each forecast shows the current adopted, uh, budget, current year adopted budget, the estimate for that current year, the upcoming year's request and the three subsequent, uh, future forecast years. Uh, the upcoming year's request is based off of each department's budget submittal and then the forecast years are built off of that budget, uh, with growth assumptions or known changes, uh, that are, you know, coming down the pipe. So growth assumptions are based on historical trends, uh, industry recommendations and other anticipated changes. Uh, the expense assumptions are applied by our object code and range from anywhere from one and a half to four percent per year. Uh, we have assumption sources that include the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, United States Postal Service, Office of Economic and Demographic Research, uh, the Congressional Budget Office and more. So this shows you the fire services fund. We are presenting the fire services fund at a flat millage rate of three point eight four one two. Uh, the top of the document does show you where your revenues are broken out and then the middle section shows your expenses. And then the bottom of the document is where you can see the reserves, uh, by year. You can see in the fire fund on the FY twenty-three, uh, budget requests and growth is, based on the FY twenty-three budget request and growth assumptions, the fund will have a reserve balance of thirteen point eight million dollars by the end of the forecast period. Uh, the fund uses a large amount of future capital reserves over the next two years as Station fifteen and Station eighteen, uh, slash forty-seven are relocated. And then while those reserves do grow in FY twenty-six, there are other station needs outside of this forecast period. So it is a good reserve balance to, to help with their capital needs. Here you see the, uh, change in taxable value for the fire fund. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-three, we are looking at a taxable value, uh, increase of thirteen point nine percent with one point four, four percent of that being new construction. Of course, at the flat millage rate, we are taking the entire growth percentage of the thirteen point nine percent. Uh, future year growth assumptions are eight percent in fiscal year twenty-four, uh, and then in FY twenty-five and twenty-six, seven and a half percent, uh, with the flat millage rate in all of those years. This slide gives you a revenue comparison year to year, uh, in the fire fund. So twenty-two's adopted revenues compared to twenty-three's request. Uh, overall, the total budget change is sixteen point two percent or eight and a half million dollars. And that is under the flat millage rate with fund balance increasing by twenty point eight percent or three point nine million dollars. And then the fund balance would be the prior year savings carried forward, uh, into the future year and fills your reserves. The largest revenue source for the fire fund is ad valorem taxes. Uh, ad valorem taxes are increasing in FY twenty-three by thirteen point six percent or four point five million dollars. The revenue earned from contracts, uh, for services provided to the city of Lake Helen is increasing by three point four percent or just over fifteen thousand dollars. And then transport revenues, which is earned by the fire fund when, um, providing EMS transports is increasing in FY twenty-three by eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, your intergovernmental and miscellaneous revenues, which include your investment earnings and sale and surplus of equipment, are increasing by, uh, just over forty-seven thousand dollars. Here you have the expense comparison for the fire fund by category. Uh, your personal services increase is eighteen point one percent or three point nine million dollars. Uh, this increase does include the wage adjustment of four percent or a dollar per hour, uh, forecasted for all staff. And then increase in medical insurance cost of six percent and then the Florida, uh, retirement system rate increases. Uh, we are also adding fifteen firefighters in FY twenty-three. Uh, twelve of the fifteen firefighters are potentially gonna be funded for three years via the SAFER grant, uh, that we have applied for, but they are represented in the expenses here. So if we do not get the grant, then we are still funding those positions. Um, the operating increase is four point eight percent or four hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The largest increases include an additional four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for maintenance of buildings and grounds, as well as increased commissions to the tax collector and property praiser's office in the amount of a hundred and ninety-three thousand. And then these increases are offset by decreases in other operating codes. Your capital outlay increase is, uh, greater than a hundred percent. It is two point one million dollars. Uh, the largest reasons for this increase are the replacement of twenty-seven cardiac monitors at a total cost of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fire is also planning to purchase a three hundred, uh, three thousand gallon water tender, uh, which the way I understand it, it gets basically a water truck to get water out to the rural areas. They call it a water tender. Um, and then four hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry, that's four hundred and fifty thousand. And then a brush truck at two hundred and fifty thousand and a four-by-four ambulance at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Your capital improvement shows a decrease of three point nine million dollars. That decrease is due to the timing and bulk of the funding for Station eighteen forty-seven's replacement, uh, being re, uh, relocation, being moved to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we adopted a higher number in twenty-one, twenty-two. They are still moving forward with that project and spending money, uh, in the next two years, but the bulk of the money is being moved to twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, your reserves increased thirty-nine point four percent or five point nine million dollars with a planned use of those reserves in the forecast years, as you saw. As far as the financial health of the fire fund, the ongoing expenses in the fire fund do account for eighty-four to ninety-two percent of the operating revenues and the balance of the revenues is used for capital outlay and improvement needs. Uh, if we are awarded the SAFER grant for the twelve new firefighters, then that would provide some one-time savings, uh, which could be applied to other capital needs in the, in the forecast and in the future years. Fire fund is forecasted with a flat millage rate in all years and the capital needs are funded based on the current assumptions. Of course, personnel, personnel increases beyond what we have estimated in the forecast, uh, could impact the financial condition. And then your ten percent emergency reserves are maintained throughout the forecast period. If there's no questions on fire, I'll move on.
I just had a quick one. The Station eighteen moved to twenty-four, twenty-five. What, what are all the reasons for that?
Um, so I probably wouldn't be the best to answer all the reasons for that. Uh, it, like I said, their funding is moved, the bulk of the funding's moved out, but they are still moving forward. moving forward with engineering and design.
Understood that.
Correct. Basically, the problem we've had with Eighteen has been location. It's trying to find a piece of property that's suitable. As you know, Eighteen actually sits, as it is today, in Flagler County on a, on a road that's hard to get out. And ideally, we had discussed this in previous, previous council meetings. We'd like to find somewhere closer on State Road Forty, so that we could help with a response time. And maybe move it slightly westward to get a little bit better coverage into the other area as Ormond and Daytona Beach are moving a little bit farther to the west themselves with the coverage of those stations.
Do you like me to add?
So it's really a, a result of not having the location yet that we want.
In a nutshell.
Good morning. Joe King, Deputy Fire Chief. Mr. Eckelwald is exactly correct. What the issue has been is just the proper location of land. And basically with everything else going on, just pushing that back a little bit to make sure we get the right place for the response. That was generally it.
Good. It needs to happen, so I just, I just wanted to. Find out why. One, one other quick question. George, this might be for you too. It's, I'm glad to see the increase in, in maintenance. We have some of us, I don't know what county council members may have received it, but I know I've received in the past concerns about mold in, in stations and roofs like in DeLeon Springs. Is that, will part of this money go to that?
Yes. They're increasing. And as you see, there's several projects also that are rehabs of existing stations as well. So they're going to increase level.
Okay. Thank you. Aaron?
All right. So moving on, here we are presenting the MSD Fund. And the MSD Fund is presented at the rollback millage rate of one point eight eight zero nine with the forecasted rollback rate in all of our future years as well. Following the same structure, you do have the revenues at the top and expenses in the middle. And then since this is such a large fund, the expenses by category and the reserves are shown on the next slide. But as you can see on the bottom of the page here, we are, well, the bottom of the page here, where the revenues less expenditures, we are adding to our reserve balances year to year. A large change in the MSD Fund that has also had an effect on the general fund is the allocation of the Volusia Sheriff's Budget. We did, an allocation study was conducted during fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two to determine how the sheriff's budget should be split between the general fund, the MSD and the cities that contract with the sheriff for services. And so we'll talk about the effects of the study during the MSD and the general fund forecast review slides. You'll see the effect of that. So this slide does give you your categorical look at the MSD forecast with reserves at the bottom, and you do see that the reserves are growing to the forty-four point two million by the end of the forecast period. But we do have some good potential uses of those reserves that we'll talk about on the financial health slide. This slide gives you your look at the change in taxable value for the MSD. The tax base for the MSD is the same as the fire fund, which is the unincorporated areas of Volusia. The big difference here is, we do have the thirteen point nine percent growth, but we're only taking advantage of the one point four percent new construction at the rollback rate. And then in the future years, we would only be taking advantage of the one point four and one point three percent new construction assumed growth in those years. So here is the comparison of revenues in the MSD Fund from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two adopted to the request for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Ad valorem tax revenue is increasing by one point three percent or two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars due to the new construction growth at the rollback rate. The largest change in the MSD revenue is we are no longer accounting for the sheriff contracts in the MSD Fund. So you see under the twenty-two pie chart, sheriff contracts listed at sixteen point nine million dollars. You will not see that in the twenty-three pie chart because we've moved the contracts for, for the sheriff to a, a new fund. It's segregated fund restricted and it can, it makes it cleaner for accounting. And then the resulted in a decrease of sixteen point nine million dollars, obviously, for twenty-three. And then a significant increase in revenues for the MSD will also be seen in the general fund as increased sales tax revenue. So our sales tax revenue is projected to increase by thirty-five point six percent or two point two million dollars greater than fiscal year twenty-two. Other revenue changes include utility tax at nine point seven percent or about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Communications tax at four point six percent or a hundred and forty-one thousand. Charges for services are up sixty-four point one percent or three hundred and fifty-two thousand, and that increases mainly due to the increased animal services revenue amounts. Permits, special assessment and other taxes are increased by three hundred and twenty-four thousand. The largest increase here is the utility use permit fees, which are estimated to increase by more than two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Miscellaneous revenues, which include investment income and constitutional offices' excess fees, are decreasing by point nine percent or four thousand, four hundred dollars. And then finally, your appropriated fund balance is increasing by twenty-four point seven percent or five point one million. This slide gives you a comparison by department for the MSD. In all county areas, personal services are, are increased by four percent or a dollar per hour for all staff. And we do have the increased medical insurance costs of six percent. And the Florida retire, retirement system rate changes are built in as well. The Office of the Sheriff is, shows a fifty-seven percent reduction or twenty-two point two million dollars, twenty-two point three million dollar decrease. As we talked about on the last slide, sixteen point nine million of that reduction is due to the city contracts being moved to the new fund. So the remaining five point four million dollars of the reduction is due to the change in the allocation for the sheriff's office, which has shifted that cost to either the general fund or the city contracts. So when we talk about the general fund, we'll see what the effect of that is as well. In Growth and Resource Management, we have an eight point eight percent or five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase. In addition to the personnel increases that are built in, we are adding an environmental specialist and a zoning technician. And there is also a one-time cost of four hundred thousand dollars for consulting services to upgrade, look at upgrading our permitting software. And then the building permit subsidy is a decrease in FY twenty-three of fifty percent or three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The budget for animal control is increasing by thirty-eight point three percent or eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which includes the already stated personnel increases, as well as two new veterinarian assistants with the associated operating supplies and equipment needed to deploy the mobile spay and neuter clinic, or new unit, five days a week concurrently with the stationary clinic. This will also result in an increase to the revenue earned as well, which we saw on the last slide. The greater than hundred percent or one point two million, one point three million dollar increase in non-departmental slash CRAs is due to the transfer of the balance of the tree replacement revenues, which is a restricted revenue that we can only use for tree replacements. So we're moving that to an, its own restricted fund instead of co-mingling it in the MSD. We've always kept track of that balance separately, but it just makes it a lot cleaner to have it in its own restricted. Local road maintenance is up twenty-five percent or one million dollars and reserves are increasing fifty-eight percent or eleven point one million dollars. For the MSD Fund, the financial health, we are forecasting it with the annual rollback millage rate based on the growth assumptions. The changes to the sheriff's allocated costs created a large amount of savings for the MSD and moving the sheriff contracts into their own fund will make the accounting cleaner on that. The reserve balance is growing based on our current assumptions. We do have some potential uses for those reserves we are exploring, which include increased funding for local road maintenance slash repairs. This could also include funding the dirt road reduction program, which would create a maintenance savings in the Transportation Trust Fund in future years. So if you remember from the Capitol presentation we did on June seventh, the West Side Dirt Dirt Road Reduction was estimated at fifteen million dollars and the East Side was estimated at seven point nine million dollars. So that's twenty-two point nine million dollars worth of dirt road reduction that could be potentially explored for this. There's also the option to pay off the sheriff's evidence facility debt early. However, with the low interest rate that we do have on that debt, it would actually make more sense for us to make the money on our investment earnings rather than paying off the debt early with such a low interest rate. So we are looking at what those options are. There's no questions on MSD? Then I will move on.
You, you answered my question. I was going to ask you about, that's a pretty good increase in reserves. So the question, probably for the public too, is, is why? When you relate that to road maintenance, you just got the attention of everybody in Volusia County. That's a, so let's make that happen. Thank you.
So here we are showing the forecast for the Ocean Center Fund. Following the same structure as our other forecast, you have the top for revenues, the middle for expenses and the bottom for reserves. As you can see, the reserve balances are growing based on the increased tourism revenue that we are currently experiencing. You know, we, we will talk about it more, but if we do get faced with a recession, one of the first things that goes during a recession is the tourism. So while these numbers do look really high, there are some concerns for the future years on whether or not that level is sustainable. So this does give you a comparison of the revenues year to year for the Ocean Center. The tourism development tax is increased by sixty-three percent or four point eight million dollars. That is the large revenue increase here. Other than that, your charges for services are up eight point six percent or a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Miscellaneous revenues are up slightly by five point one percent or twenty-four thousand dollars. And then your appropriated fund balance is increasing by six point seven million dollars. And again, that is your savings from prior year being carried forward. Here you see your expense comparison year to year. For the Ocean Center, the personnel and services is increasing by five point six percent or the a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. It includes all of the categories that I've already mentioned, the wage adjustment, the retirement and the, the health insurance increases. And then your operating is increased by thirteen point five percent or six hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. The largest increases there are utility costs at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Your property insurance at a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Promotional materials at a hundred and eight thousand and professional services at two hundred thousand. The two hundred thousand for professional services is a one-time cost for a master plan study. Your coordinated marketing, debt service and capital outlay are all decreased by a combined ten point six percent or a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And Ocean Center capital is increased by greater than a hundred percent at two point three million dollars. The loan to the parking garage, you saw on the slide for twenty-two adopted, you do not see in the twenty-three request, but we are forecasting an additional loan in fiscal year twenty-four from the Ocean Center to the parking garage, which you'll see in the parking garage forecast next. And your reserves in this fund are increasing by nine point nine, just about ten million dollars, based on the current assumption. For the financial health, the Ocean Center's ongoing operating expenses represent sixty-seven percent of the total expenses in this fund. The remaining expenses are to fill the capital needs at the facility. We have experienced record tourism in the, in the last year, which has led to the increase in revenues and subsequently the reserves. There are some large projects forecasted in the future years, such as the arena seat replacement project that is forecasted currently at about eight million dollars. That could have a greater cost by the time we get to replacement. And then we also have additional loan needs for the parking garage, as you'll see in the next forecast, that could take away some of these reserves as well. Still, the fund does have sufficient revenue to meet its ongoing needs. And the professional services that I mentioned, we have engaged a consultant at the request of the TDC to look at potential future expansion needs for the Ocean Center and surrounding park. If there's no questions on Ocean Center, I'll move on. So the parking garage is shown here with the same structure as the other forecast. You can see that the reserves in the parking garage are at seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars in fiscal year twenty-three based on current assumptions. It's not a large reserve balance and it is the capital needs that are driving down those reserve balances in this fund. We do have the loan from the parking garage, or I'm sorry, loan from the Ocean Center forecasted in fiscal year twenty-four, which you see there at the four point eight million dollars. And that is to continue the deck rehabilitation at the parking garage that is currently underway. The revenue comparison in the parking garage, the revenues is pretty much exclusively the parking revenues. It is increasing seventeen percent or three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And then there's a small amount of investment earnings in this fund. So this gives you your expense budget comparison. Your personal services are increased by four point seven percent or three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Your operating is decreased by two point four percent or twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. You have a small capital outlay increase of two thousand, two hundred dollars. Your debt service increase of ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And your capital improvements increase of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Your reserves in this fund are actually decreased by five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars as we continue to replace the, or rehabilitate the debts. As far as financial health for the parking garage, the capital maintenance needs at the parking garage, like I said, are greatly affecting this balance. The decks two and six are currently under refurbishment with decks three, four and five planned for future years. We do have the pedestrian bridge that goes over A1A in that area too. That is also going to need refurbishment and we do not have an estimated cost on that yet. So that's where we will require an additional loan from the Ocean Center based on the cost of the, of that bridge. Currently, the loans from the Ocean Center total seven point three million dollars with the potential to increase based on the capital needs. The parking garage debt payments are ending after fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, at which time repayment to the Ocean Center can begin in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five based on our current assumption. If there's no questions on the parking garage, then I'll move on.
Just, just one, if you, and you don't even have to go back, but I think it was slide sixteen, eight sixteen on reserves for the Ocean Center. Can you expand on why they're increasing, what they'll be used for?
The Ocean Center reserves? So they are increasing because of the tourism revenue, the increased tourism revenue that we've received into the fund. And then additional loan to the parking garage for the pedestrian bridge is a, is a one potential use of these reserves. And we do have other Ocean Center capital replacement needs that aren't represented in this forecast, that go outside of this forecast period. So you do need to build some, some reserves for that as well. And then another point, like I had said earlier, tourism, if you do, are faced with a recession, tourism is going to be one of your first things to go. And so a healthy reserve balance to maintain operations in the Ocean Center is definitely not a bad thing as their, their replacement needs aren't going to change and the revenues can fluctuate greatly.
Thank you. I think it's important for the.
Absolutely.
Public to understand, because anytime we talk about reserves, it, it, it creates questions in the public. So I want everybody to know.
It's important to remember too, especially in these enterprise funds, reserve is really just another term for their savings account as they build up for their, either repairs or projects. And in addition to the seats, there's some concrete work that will probably need to be done on the Ocean Center. Remember how, just like a lot of buildings that are over there by the ocean, they need constant work. And it's so large, a hundred thousand square feet of just the new exhibit hall, that anything usually costs a lot. There was a lot of it. But yet, the term reserve, I know gets everybody thinking, but it's really for us, it's a savings account for, we know repairs that are coming, but we just don't know exactly which year.
Right. And, and I think this year, it's, it's wise in favor of seeing healthy reserves because we don't know what the economy is going to do. And if we go into a recession, it's better to have the reserves than to, than the alternative of making really difficult cuts and decisions. So just, I, I really just wanted that made clear. Thank you.
No problem. So the next fund we'll go into is Votran. So Votran is shown here with the same setup. Votran has had its own federal COVID ARPA funding for the last few years, which has allowed us to keep the general fund subsidy much lower than the pre-pandemic level. In FY twenty-three, the general fund subsidy is increasing to seven point five million dollars with further increases estimated in future years. You can see it, it is the general fund transfer operating right above the millage rate equivalency line at near the top. And so you're going from seven and a half million in twenty-three to ten point four million in twenty-four and beyond. It is important to note that we, we had already forecasted the growth in that subsidy prior to, to fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. The subsidy was at eleven point nine million dollars for Votran. And we had forecasted it to grow up above thirteen million dollars at, at that time. So the growth is not surprising. It is the level that we were supposing. It is the level that we were subsidizing it at prior to the federal fundings holding them up. The reserve balance is one point six million in fiscal year twenty-three and that amount is kept flat throughout the forecast years. This does your revenue comparison year to year, a lot more colorful than some of the other ones, got some other sources. So your, your mass transit fares are increased three point one percent or sixty-two thousand dollars. Your state mass transit is increasing five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Your COVID funding is decreasing by five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, but we knew that that was going to happen. We knew it was going to run out. Reoccurring assistance is decreased by six point four percent or four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And then, as I mentioned, the general fund subsidy is increasing by fifty percent or two and a half million dollars. You have a miscellaneous revenue increase of a hundred and five thousand dollars. And then your appropriated fund balance is decreasing by four point two million dollars. So again, we, we had always planned for this to happen. As the COVID funding ran out, they would use some of their reserves to transition us back to a higher general fund subsidy. So it is going exactly how we had anticipated for that. The expense comparison in Votran, your personnel is actually decreased by four point three percent or eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Remember that personnel is the contracted personnel, that isn't county personnel. So they have their own wage adjustments to deal with, their own insurance cost and things like that. Their fuel, which is a big product in Votran, is increased by sixty-four percent or one point six million dollars based on the fuel prices that we have now. It is a large increase. Maintenance of vehicles is decreased by twenty-nine thousand dollars. Contracted services is decreased by twenty-seven thousand. The county personnel charged to this fund is increased by four point nine percent or three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. And then your reserves are decreased by the sixty-two point five percent or two point seven million dollars. As far as the Votran Fund's financial health, as I mentioned, we have been supported in recent years with the federal ARPA coronavirus funding. Prior to the two thousand nineteen, we did have the eleven point nine million dollar general fund subsidy. The operation is faced with its own challenges as far as recruiting bus drivers and compensation for the bus drivers and battling the rising fuel cost. I mean, obviously, fuel affects the buses driving around more than anything else. And we are currently conducting an operational model review that includes assessing mobility on demand options as well as other operational changes that could affect the forecast. Heather.
Do we have someone from Votran here?
We do.
Good morning. I just wondered if you could touch on the part about Votran personnel being reduced? Because I don't know if you were here for the open discussion this morning, the public discussion, but we had someone from the Transportation Disadvantage Board that came in and was talking about how services really diminished. And they really need more drivers. So I'm looking at a tremendous reduction in personnel funding and you just touched on that?
Kelvin Miller, General Manager for Votran. Really, the reduction in the personnel services is because of the lack of drivers we have that the number we're budgeted for is a lot less than what we actually have. But that's why you see the decrease in personal services.
The amount that you're budgeted for is less than what you actually have or the other way around?
The number of drivers that we actually, that we normally would budget for is a lot less than what we actually have.
You say, we're budgeted for the amount of drivers, you can't fill them. That's the issue, just like in a lot of our other areas like lifeguards. It's been a national issue, it's been in the paper. They're budgeted, basically, he can hire at will. We'll worry about when he gets close, but he's not close.
Okay. But I'm, I'm just looking at the actual budget that we're looking at adopting and the budget itself, the monies for personnel looks like it's going down. So the fiscal request is less?
Yes.
So you're requesting less this year, but wouldn't, if, wouldn't you be requesting more if you're desperately in need of drivers? Or would you be
It's all based on
Assuming that this year you're going to be out there really humping it and looking for drivers. And I know you talked about that before, that you, you are putting some of those practices in place. So wouldn't you expect then, because this is the forecast, right? This is not the current. So if you're forecasting us for the next year, wouldn't you be forecasting us that you are hoping that personnel monies would not be going down? Personnel numbers down than currently?
If, if we were forecasting that we'd be at full staff of operators, then we would forecast that if we could fill all the positions that we have available, yes, then the expenses would go up.
But you're basically requesting less money from us, correct? I mean, we're looking at the budget.
Donna Butler, Community Services Director. We've also made some significant route changes, which have kept us, you know, holding on. We still are supplementing our drivers daily from staff that have moved into administrative roles when they come back. But we currently need fewer drivers than what we had originally budgeted for because of the route reductions that we've made. So that may be part of the shift that you're seeing coming down. But he still has plenty of money to fill the vacancies that we have. And on top of that, we've done some hiring bonuses, some retaining bonuses. Amber, you know, anticipating that we're going to continue to do that. We've maximized every way that we know how to advertise. We've partnered with Human Resources, so they advertise for our bus drivers. But we have enough money in the proposed budget to cover what we currently have plus the vacancies needed to run the system.
With the reduction in money for personnel, we're also addressing the pay and everything?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the starting pay for bus drivers now?
It's fourteen dollars an hour.
Fourteen starting or fourteen with training?
Fourteen starting.
Fourteen walking in the door?
Yes. We, we made an adjustment about two or three months ago. The starting pay was at twelve dollars and we, we adjusted it to fourteen dollars an hour.
And then what is it after the training?
It starts at fourteen dollars an hour.
So it's just period fourteen now? It doesn't go up?
Yes.
Barbara Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I was under the impression we had worked to get staff up to start at fifteen, so that wouldn't affect the bus drivers?
Well, you have to remember that we are, we have a union, so we have negotiations coming up with the union.
Okay, that's fair. So I also, like, Councilwoman Post had concerns with the recipient that was here this morning and the concerns for, we met with the disabled
Yes.
Committee and the concerns with how, I guess, services are being handled for the blind and other, those with other challenges. Have we been able to do anything to prioritize their needs?
Uh, yes.
It sounds like I've received a couple of new communications about those concerns. So I know there's challenges going on with staffing, but I think there's certainly a special need there. So have we been able to prioritize?
Yes, we have. One of the things that you, the council approved, I think back in April, is another contractor to do our taxi cab services. So they're able to pick up a lot of the shifts that, that we were actually unable to do. So now we have actually two taxi cab providers and two contractors to pick up some of our transit services to kind of schedule the more trips and, and make sure that those trips aren't delayed by not having those, the driver shortage, by having those driver shortages.
Okay. And is that, that being monitored for compliance in
Yes.
In service level?
Excuse me. Yes, we actually have, doing this driver shortages, our contractor who goes out and monitors those, he has actually had, had been driving for a while, but now we've gotten him off the road. He's actually able to go out more and look at these contractors and taxi cab providers to make sure that they are in adherence to our contract.
Thank you.
Ben Johnson.
Yes, I think this is responsible budget and budget for what we know we think we're going to use. They've already looked at this. That's one of the reasons you have reserves. If all of a sudden, for some reason, we do fill them up and you have to transfer monies, you have those monies. But we have to remember, next couple of months, we're coming up on our voting for the budgets and all of a sudden people say we're spending too much money. And this is what you're trying to do right now is bring it to our bottom dollar to do it correctly, to have the money there so that when we do come up, we're not fighting this battle again. I think you're being very responsible on this, as he said, fourteen dollars an hour. I'm quite certain when it comes to union negotiations, that'd probably be looked at. But as for putting more money into it on positions we can't fill and we know we can't fill, and everybody's having that same problem, we're having it in the comm center, we're having it on the beach. Our police departments are having it, fire departments not so much, but at most places, the building industry are having a problem hiring. So I commend you for doing it this way and let's watch and once again, one of the reasons to keep our reserves.
Heather Post.
I just, I'm also looking at the contracted services and contracted services are going down as well, the budget. But then I keep hearing that our contracted services are going up by, by better service, so.
Some of the, some of the contracted services applies to other things besides the taxi cab drivers and the contractors. But some of our other services that we, we need, we actually need more money for those, less money for those services than actually the taxi cab providers or the contractors.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron. All right. So next up is the Economic Development Fund. So this is the economic development forecast shown here. The subsidy to economic development was reduced via council direction in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two by just over two million dollars. The subsidy is decreased by a hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as we move the expenses for the federal and state lobbyist contracts into the general fund. So since we moved those contracts into the general fund, we reduced the subsidy by that amount in order to keep that hole in the general fund. There is eight million of one-time funding available for economic development programs, which is inclusive of the seven point three million in prior year funding being brought forward and then just over six hundred thousand of new funding. So you'll see the seven point three million associated to our fund balance that we're bringing forward. That is prior year money. And so that's why I'm saying it is one time, because once you use it, it's not going to be replaced. The only money we are putting in as far as for new programs is just over the six hundred thousand dollars of new funding. So this does give you a comparison of revenues year to year. The general fund subsidy is the main source of revenue. The miscellaneous revenues is mainly investment earnings. So your main source of revenue for this fund is, it is strictly a general fund-supported fund in operation. This is the expense budget comparison for economic development. Your personnel is decreased by nine point nine percent or ninety-six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. During fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we actually transferred two positions from economic development into the airport. So that is part of what that decrease represents, which some of the decrease was offset by personnel, the wage adjustment, the group insurance and the retirement rate changes. Your operating is increased by thirteen point two percent or thirty-nine thousand dollars. Your legislative program, I already mentioned, is decreased by the lobbyist contract of a hundred and fifty thousand. Your airport incentive funding, Team Volusia, UCF Incubator, SCORE, Main Street, Deland, African American Entrepreneur Association is all kept flat. The funding for those operations is all kept flat. And your reserve for grant matches decreased a hundred percent or one million dollars. And that's because we have already obtained the grant that we had the reserve for. So there's no reason to carry that funding forward. And then your incentive program funding is decreased by two point nine percent or two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The financial health for economic development, general fund subsidy is sufficient for ongoing operations. We do have one-time incentive funding, our economic development program funding available in the eight million dollar range. Six hundred thousand of that is new funding that we are adding each year. And then an important note is council does approve any use of that funding prior to the expenditure. It is not just money that is sitting there waiting for staff to decide where it goes. It is council's authorization to spend. And so if I don't have any questions on economic development?
One, one question. I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but I, I do have a request for the incentive funding. If you look back at eight twenty-six, I know you keep, we're talking about one-time funding. I would like to ask the, the Economic Development Department to consider moving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that incentive program to the UCF incubator program. One of the, one of the shining stars of what we do and we're only, we put two hundred and fifty thousand in it. Did I say million a minute ago?
I think.
Two hundred, so I would, I would like to see that doubled if they think that would greatly improve the program. Because I think as an incentive, that's one of the very best things that we could do. We're, we're helping young, well, actually entrepreneurs of any age create incredible businesses there that stay here and add to our tax base, hire people. I just think it's a, it's a program that we should really be proud of. I know you are and I would like to see the funding increased for there out of the incentive, eight million.
Good morning, Cyrus Callum, Aviation and Economic Resources. So UCF and the incubator program, like you said, great partners, great partnership that we have. And we're, we're honored to have them as they stand right now. So please give me an opportunity to take that information back and we'll definitely see what we can do. And hopefully we'll come back with good news on the front of being able to double that if possible.
Okay, thank you. Barb, did you have a question?
Yeah. I'm, I'm really impressed with what HOG has been doing out in the community with the business resource. But I also, once I came on council, I remember asking if we were members of local chambers. And, and we were not. And to me, to, to be inclusive and be exclusive, it, it's a conflict to me that we have partners that we don't partner with. So I don't know if the one sixty-nine, five hundred includes, includes that type of opportunity, but I certainly would ask the council if they would also support us being members of chambers and not just talk the talk, walk the walk, not just talk the talk, right? So I think it would be important to be a better partner in those type of arrangements.
We'll talk about, but I think historically, some of our enterprise funds, like the airport, have been members of the chamber. I would have to double check that and I think the Ocean Center, but
But not the county.
Yeah, well, not the county itself, because the county itself is a government. I would have to talk to legal. I mean, the chamber does, also does lobbying and other things that it may make it a little bit cumbersome was just to be a direct member with our, with our general government.
If there's a reason for it, then just let me know what it is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look. But definitely, like I say, we have, we run businesses as well, as well. And those business entities, I think, have been members at various times. So I'll, I'll find out. I know, you know, we're active with Halifax quite a bit and partner with them quite a bit on, on projects.
That's, that's my point. Even through COVID, when it came time to reaching out to businesses, we were good partners. But also being part of a good partner is, you know, representing each other. So if that's doable, I would like to see it. And if it's not, I'd like to know why, just so it's not a question going forward. Thank you.
I will relay the information. Thank you, Cyrus.
You're sir. So just for clarity for, for myself going forward, as we do put the budget together, you'd like to see more money put into the incubator, is that what I, is that?
I would. I don't know what the feeling of the rest of the council is, but.
I thought I heard Cyrus say he was going to check to see if that was even
Right.
Needed.
Yeah, I'd like a recommendation before I make a
Right.
Yeah, okay. Let me see what I can Back as part of the budget proposal then. Yeah, either way, we'll figure out a way. Yeah, either way, we'll figure out a way to, the best way of doing it. Okay, he'll check.
Mr. Chair, is your point to work on reducing the incentives or?
Well, my point is that, yeah, we have eight million dollars there. We have an incubator program that's a fabulous program. I would just like to see that funding increase and I see that as a way to do it that doesn't require a tax increase for everybody. I think it fits right into the incentive program, but we'll, you know, we're going to have to, we'll see what the proposal is and we'll have to discuss it and debate it as a council. I just wanted to get it on the table.
Thank you, sir. And if it does come out of the incentives, of course, we would bring that back to you so you all approve that.
Certainly a better way to spend the incentives.
We're working on it. And that's something I think we can take a look at separately because we do have some thoughts about incentives and that money and investing in some of our own projects around the airport. So we'll talk more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Aaron?
All right. So that brings us to the star of the show, the general fund. So we are presenting the general fund at the rollback millage rate of four point eight five zero six for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
He does that with a heavy heart. Did you notice that? He stressed him to say that.
The future years are.
Ryan has a mask on, so we can't see his face.
Yeah, he feels fine. He just put the mask. The future years are forecasted with a flat millage rate based on our current assumptions. And we'll get into those growth assumptions here on the next slide. At the rollback rate, we are using sixteen point one million dollars of fund balance in FY twenty-three. You can see this in the blue line right above total fund revenues. So that's the amount of one-time money we are using to balance this budget. And that one-time money is savings from prior year. And here's how we're using that one-time money. So we're using nine point two million dollars for carry forward of capital from prior year. There's multiple reasons. That number's higher than it was last year. Last year, when we adopted the budget, we carried forward three point seven million dollars of capital. This year, it's nine point two million dollars. Part of the reason is supply chain issues. Another part of the reason is a few of the projects were put out to bid and the bids we got back were ridiculous. And so staff decided to look at the scope and rebid the project so that we could get a more acceptable bid for what we're looking to do instead of just accepting such a high bid and spending that kind of money. That's why you see such a high carry forward number. And that is a perfectly acceptable use of fund balance, right? Because it is fiscal year twenty-two money. Those projects were approved in the fiscal year twenty-two budget with fiscal year twenty-two revenues. You're not spending them in this year, so you're carrying that revenue forward. You're carrying the expense forward with it. The other amounts that we're using, we're using three point three million dollars for the corrections air handler and chiller replacement projects. So while that's not really a one-time use because they're going to need to be replaced eventually again, they should last for close to twenty years. So at three million dollars for the replacement of the chiller, three million dollars for the replacement of the air handler, that's a large capital. It's not going to happen year to year in corrections. So a one-time use of that money, that's why we keep a reserves for future capital. So that is an acceptable use. Then we are using two point two million dollars to fund the set aside for the sheriff's helicopter replacements. That's where you start getting a little bit more gray because we're replacing, we're setting aside two point two million dollars every year for that sheriff, for the sheriff helicopter replacement. So while it's really not a one-time use of money, it is a large capital project, so that reserves for future capital. You can make it acceptable to use that, right? And then the sheriff, I already mentioned the allocation study and how it shifted costs to the cities. It shifted costs to the general fund. The sheriff had agreed with the cities to allow them a year to transition to those higher costs. So we are using one point four million dollars of one-time money to help the cities transition to that higher cost. So we're covering the one point four million dollars in the general fund. That amount in future years would be allocated out to the cities. If you look at FY twenty-four, you'll see we are forecasting the use of ten point five million dollars of one-time money to fund, to balance that year. And that is at the flat millage rate. Of that ten point five million, I can comfortably justify the five point two basically with two of the same projects that we just talked about, the sheriff helicopter set aside and the corrections air handler replacement in that year. The other five point three million dollars of expenses that we're funding with that one-time money, those are recurring expenses that are going to happen year after year. Now, that year, we see a large jump in Sunrail funding of nine point nine million dollars. And then the FOTRAN subsidy is also estimated to increase by two point nine million dollars. When we're faced with those kind of increases from Sunrail, I mean, Sunrail's the big story here with that nine point nine million dollar increase. Those are recurring expenses that you're going to have to fund. So that's why we're saying we're showing it with a flat millage rate based on our growth assumptions. And going to a rollback next year would only increase the ten million dollar number up to twenty-two million dollars if we were at the estimated rollback rate next year. So when we're looking at the future years, it's all in flux. Things can change. But this is where we're looking at it now and this is what we're faced with when we're making these decisions. The use of fund balance in FY twenty-five is only two point one million dollars. So that gets to a more acceptable number based on growth. And then in FY twenty-six, we transition not to using any one-time money in this forecast. So the point there is fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, we may be able to look at a rollback or a partial rollback, just depending on what changes. But in FY twenty-four, based on the increases we're faced with, rollback would be very, very hard to achieve. This is the second page of the general fund forecast where you see the major capital plan. The only major projects currently funded in this forecast that we're using one-time money for are the corrections air handler and chiller replacement. You see three hundred thousand for the air handler replacement. That's for engineering and then the three million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four would be for the actual replacement. Just as a reminder, the June seventh council meeting where we did the capital presentation, we had eight hundred and ninety-seven million dollars worth of capital projects that we did not have funding identified for. So to just keep that in mind, when we're looking at the major capital plan, there are a lot of other needs out there that we just have not found the funding for in the current forecast. You can see at the bottom of the page, our reserve balances do decline each year until FY twenty-six, at which time we do start adding some more money back into reserves for future capital. Of course, by the time we get to that year, other changes could be made. And then this forecast does not take into account a recession, which could have a great effect on our property tax revenue, sales tax, state revenue sharing and other revenue sources. So this shows you the change in the taxable value for the general fund. The taxable value is increasing fourteen point three percent with two point three percent of that increase being new construction. So at the rollback rate, that is all we are taking is the two point three percent new construction. Now, in future years, we are forecasting eight percent growth in fiscal year twenty-four, eight percent growth in twenty-five and seven point four percent growth in twenty-six. We are forecasting taking all of that growth at the flat millage rate. So just keep that in mind when we're looking at these. So this does give you a revenue comparison year to year. You know, I'm sure the question's burning, how did we get to rollback this year? Well, it's not the ad valorem taxes that got us to rollback. They got us a little over six million dollars in revenue at the rollback rate. It is the changes in our other revenues that helped us achieve rollback this year. Our sales tax, similar to the MSD, I mentioned the increase there. The sales tax has increased by sixteen point nine percent or two point nine million dollars in the general fund. So that is a significant revenue increase. Ad valorem taxes, I just mentioned the six point two million of new construction. Our judgment fines, forfeitures, license and permits are increased by four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This increase is due to, mainly due to court fees returning to their pre-pandemic levels. We get a lot of court fee revenue to offset the court cost in the general fund. And so that increases, their revenues are trending back towards their pre-pandemic levels. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by seventy-five percent or seven million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. This increase, you're going to see related expense for the majority of that increase on the expense side because the increase is due to the hospital authorities Medicaid contributions. So that's five point nine million dollars of that seven point five million dollar increase. So prior to this budget, we had not, we just treated the hospital authorities revenue as a pass-through. It came to us, we paid the expense, we didn't record it as a budgeted revenue, we didn't record it as a budgeted expense. At the recommendation of our external auditors, we decided to budget for that revenue and budget for that expense. So it's pretty much a wash. But you do see the expenses increasing by that same amount when we get to the expense slide. And transfer from, I'm sorry, state revenue sharing in the intergovernmental revenues was also an increase of one point six million dollars. So we saw state revenue sharing that is deposited into the general fund increase significantly as well. Other taxes were decreased by eight thousand dollars or less than one percent. Transfer from other funds is an increase of twenty-one point seven percent or two point four million dollars. The increase here is due to additional excess fees being budgeted for, for the constitutional offices in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, as well as increased revenue from providing administrative services to the constitutional officers in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The remaining increase is due to the transfer of four percent of the landfill profits into the general fund. So we are, that amount for fiscal year twenty-three is eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And so the landfill is a county asset and so it is a county operated business. So as such, we are taking four percent of the business income, the profits from that operation, and we're moving it into the general fund to help offset additional costs.
We will have to come back and talk to you later on. We've mentioned about fee increases as part of that operation as well. Because remember, we are getting ready to build fifty million dollar cell out there that we have to have. So, but that being said, I do think it's proper that we take a little bit of the profit that is out at the landfill because the general fund made that investment years ago. And we have also, just so you know, been always taking an administrative charge. So really, in a lot of ways, this is just an increase in that administrative charge. But the idea is it's a four percent and they can afford that. But again, I don't want there to be any surprise later on when we start talking about paying for the big cell expansion because that will require a tipping fee increase.
Aaron, pause for a second for questions. Heather Post?
Yes, so George, when you're talking about the fees being raised, I know that we have approved several fees across the county and various departments raised over the last year. So as we go into this budget season, can we get a list of any of that that has been raised to the public across the board?
Sure, we'll put that together. That's definitely been part of the plan. And tipping fees, just to remind everyone, that is a tonnage fee that is for the, all the truckloads of household garbage that goes out there and have not been touched in twenty years. So it's something that's been a long time coming.
Yeah, you're waiting for me to confirm that. So as someone who uses that landfill, that needs, it's, it has been twenty years. And it is time that they were raised to a more appropriate level. We are, we are below most other people that I check with, other counties, other municipalities. Nobody likes raising fees, but we have to pay for the costs out there. And I know at the transfer station, there's some work that could stand to be done. You notice it every time it rains.
So as far as other revenue increases, the charges for services in the general fund are increasing twelve point six percent or one point five million dollars. The increase there is due to the beach access fees increasing at one point five million dollars. Now, that's not a great increase for the beach access fees. It's just based on the trend of the usage that the beach is bringing in more revenue. Summer recreation fees, you guys did adjust those rates. So some of this two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollar increase is because of the rate adjustment and some of it is just because of trend usage. Medical examiner fees, another rate that you guys did adjust, is increasing at a hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then the corrections booking and daily substance fees that you guys approved, that's accounting for eight hundred and forty thousand dollars of a revenue increase in this fiscal year twenty-three budget. Some of these increases were offset by moving the revenue from the sheriff airport contract into its own fund because we used to account for the amount that the airport paid for sheriff security out there in the general fund because that's where the cost was. So since we moved the sheriff city contracts into its own fund, we moved the airport contract with it. So you no longer have that revenue here, but you don't have the expense either. And then miscellaneous revenues has increased by fifty-six point nine percent or one point two million dollars. This increase is due to moving the corrections commission revenues for the phone, tablet and video visitation back into the general fund. For a period of time, it was moved into the inmate welfare fund, but we actually looked at where the true cost for those are occurring. And putting it in the inmate welfare fund restricts its use. It should go to offsetting the cost of corrections. And so this is one point two million dollars that is increased in the general fund for those revenues and it is going directly towards corrections operating expenses. The appropriated fund balance is an increase of seven point four percent or five point three million dollars and that is based on savings from prior year.
Aaron?
Yes.
Barb Gertman had a question for you.
I do, or a request. Can we be assured that anything that says miscellaneous, whether it's revenues or expenses, that it's itemized for the public?
So yeah, so the miscellaneous revenue category on the pie chart, when you look in the budget document, it rolls down to a miscellaneous category, but there it is itemized by object code. There is one revenue source that is coded miscellaneous revenue and it is not widely used. It is a very small amount. It is for revenues that we just don't have classified anywhere else and it's based on trend, but it's a very, very small amount. And we do not have any expenses in our budget classified as miscellaneous. All of our expenses are classified in the correct categories.
Good, because there's certainly a misperception in the community about miscellaneous. So if we can be as clear as we can about that.
Brian Osowski, CFO. The one thing that I would like to add to that is that miscellaneous revenues is the one area where you will always see a miscellaneous. There's actually a state chart of accounts that's administered by the Florida CFO that is a uniform chart of accounts that applies to all local governments. And there is a specific revenue category in that state administered chart of accounts called miscellaneous revenues for revenues that don't fit another category. So we are following the state when we have that miscellaneous revenue.
Thank you.
All right, so this slide here gives you the general fund expense budget comparison year to year by the categories. So personnel increase is seven point one percent or six million dollars. This increase does include the four percent or a dollar per hour for all staff. It's a much larger number than other funds because there's, the bulk of the staff is in the general fund. And then we have the six percent increase cost in the county group insurance and then the Florida state retirement rate changes. In addition, we are adding a computer support analyst position for courts, special projects coordinator in facilities for asset management and two trades worker ones in facilities for the trades worker apprentice program. The facilities additions were presented during the budget and service level presentation as potential additions that they wanted to include in the budget. So that's why you're seeing those here. And then we also are adding six corrections officers, officer positions to the budget. I'd like to touch on that a little bit more because that is another thing that we did to help keep us or put us at rollback is last year, we agreed to the need to add eighteen corrections officers over a three-year period. We added six last year. We're adding six this year. We're adding six next year. However, you guys have already been told multiple times that we have a very high vacancy rate at corrections right now. We've always had what we call attrition positions, which are positions that we, that are fully authorized to be filled, but we don't budget the money for them based on the vacancy rate. So while we added the authorization to add six corrections officers to this budget, we just increased the attrition number by six to offset that addition until they bring that vacancy rate down. Now, one of the things, when you're looking at future years, we've done that through the forecast. So that's about, just. So that's about just over three million dollars for all four years of adding those positions. We do anticipate an overtime reduction as you bring on the additional staff. Cause that's what the additional positions were for is for staffing relief. So we should see an overtime reduction as we, uh, in transition from the attrition positions and start budgeting for those positions again. Hopefully we'll see an overtime reduction equal to or around. So then in the operating, you have an increase of forty two point nine percent or twenty nine point nine million dollars. Now, while this seems like a giant operating increase, um, twenty two point two million of the increase is due to recording the commissions paid to the property appraiser and the tax collector. Uh, as operating a call, app, as operating cost as opposed to interfund transfers at the recommendation of our inner, uh, and external auditors. So in fiscal year twenty two's budget, the property appraiser and tax collector commissions would have been included in the interfund transfer piece of the pie. Uh, and that's why you see such a, a drop in interfund transfers from year to year. Because it's now being accounted for in the operating. So twenty two million of that twenty nine million dollar increase is because of just reclassifying, it's not really an increase. Uh, there is some increase in the commissions that we're paying to them, uh, however, it's just shifting it to operating instead of interfund transfers. Another five point six million of the increase is the expense to offset the increased revenue for booking the portion of the state Medicaid payment for, uh, made by the hospital authorities. So that is another large piece of the operating increase. If you exclude those changes, the operating increase over last year is three percent or two point one million dollars. Out of that increase, uh, the payments made to CRA's account for an increase of, uh, just about one point one million. Uh, leaving a total operating increase of a million dollars. Uh, the capital outlay increase is four point one percent or one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Capital improvement increase is thirty five point four percent or six point six million dollars. What's tied up in that number two though, is the carry forward of capital. Cause we, it's just a categorical look, right? So it includes all capital. Well, I already pointed out that we are at nine point two million dollars of carry forward. So truly, if you were looking year to year of new capital, it's a decrease in capital. Um, however, it's shown as an increase because of the money we're carrying forward. Uh, your interfund transfer is a decrease of thirteen point nine percent or fifteen point, uh, six million dollars. And then your reserves are increased by point seven percent or four hundred and five thousand dollars. This slide here, uh, you'll remember from last year, it gives you a, a look at the budget breakdown, how the general fund budget is broke down. So this includes the total, uh, requested general fund budget of three hundred and seventy six million, five hundred and seventy eight thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, it does include the one time, uh, money of the reserves, the carry forward from prior year. Uh, the sustainable use of fund balance, the major capital transfers that we're using fund balance for. Um, so when you pull that stuff out, you are left with a recurring general fund budget. And so the recurring general fund budget is what we're showing here at the three hundred and five million, three hundred and fifty four thousand, three hundred and thirty five dollars. Important to point out here is your external expenses and support and public protection. They total just over seventy five percent of the total general fund. Uh, now there are some things under external, uh, expenses and support that we do have some control over and there could be decisions made on. Uh, when I say we, I mean at the council level. Um, but they truly are expenses that are for external sources or supporting external sources such as the office of the sheriff, tax collector. Uh, property appraiser, clerk of court, supervisor of elections. We have court and DJJ cost in here, drug abuse and mental health, um, the department of health funding. So you see the list there on the side of what those external expenses are. The other county operations account for nine point eight percent or twenty nine point eight million dollars of the recurring budget. Subsidies account for ten point one, and you do know that, uh, the, in the future years, that number will continue to grow. And then operational support is at eleven point eight percent or thirty six million dollars of the, uh, reoccurring general fund budget. This gives you a comparison, uh, year to year by those different categories. So you can see where the increases, uh, were, where we really had the increases. So external expenses and support, that's where the, we have a twenty seven million dollar increase in the general fund budget. Seventeen of it is sitting there in external expenses and support. The largest part of this change is the increased funding to the office, the office of the sheriff, which is up fifteen point one percent or nine point five million dollars. This does not represent his budget increase. Um, as the, uh, the allocation study that I mentioned, I said it was going to shift cost to the general fund, shift cost to the cities. So some of this increase is related to that shifting. Uh, if you apply the allocation method, uh, that the, that the external company, uh, came to. And the sheriff and, uh, management sat down and agreed to. If you apply that to fiscal year twenty two, then the sheriff's funding from the general fund would have been sixty six point eight million dollars. Uh, which is four point one million dollars higher than what it was in twenty two. So four point one million dollars of the nine point five million dollar increase is because of the shifting due to that allocation study. And I also mentioned, I mentioned earlier that we're covering the city's transition to a higher contract rate, which accounts for one point five million of that sheriff's increase. If you take those into account, then the recurring increase in the sheriff funding from the general fund is up five point seven percent. Or, uh, three point nine million dollars. Uh, so just to break that down, so it's not, uh, misconstrued that his budget went up ten million dollars. Well, it did go up ten million to the general fund, but there's reasons for why that, uh, is allocated that way. Uh, the increase in Medicaid payments to the state is the other large increase in the external expenses as the payments grew well over a hundred percent. Uh, to five point six million dollars. And, uh, this is of course due to the recording of the revenues for the hospital authorities as well as the expense, like I mentioned. Other increases in the external expenses and support, uh, our property appraiser commissions are increasing one point two million dollars. Our tax collector commissions are increasing, uh, roughly one point one million dollars. Supervisor of elections actually had a decrease in, uh, her requested budget of seven hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Uh, constitutional support, so some of the capital projects that were budgeted in twenty two, uh, mainly for the office of the sheriff. They are, they're funded out of our budget and they're considered support for his office. So we have carried forward those projects, um, so they're part of the capital carry forward. And it's showing a constitutional support decrease of five hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Um, the other increases and decreases minor, um. The CRA payments I mentioned are the one point one million dollar increase. And then our P M T payment, uh, to the state, which gets us revenue into the R E M S fund has increased by five hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. However, we are going to get a lot more funding in EMS because of that increase. So that is a, a very positive increase that we like to see. I'm sorry, let me back up for a second. You can see the subsidies, uh, is an increase of two point three million dollars. I mentioned the two and a half million dollars for VOTRAN and then the hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction for economic development. So there's where you get your two point three million dollar increase. Operational support, so the operational support divisions, which include, um, finance, business services, um, uh, facilities, information technology, leadership, uh, human resources. So operational support divisions are up one point one percent or three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. And then other county operations, community services, parks rec, growth resource management, public works, which is mainly coastal. Is up two point four percent or seven hundred and five thousand dollars. So those are very minor increases in those areas, um, are carry.
Especially given inflation. I was gonna say, earlier you mentioned, you know, we're here because of, of, um, some of the other increases in revenue combined with the fact that we are very conservative in our expenses. That we were able to, in most cases, be below actually the inflation rate.
Uh, so you see the carry forward from prior year, those are the numbers I quoted earlier. We carried forward three point seven last year, we're only, we're carrying forward nine point two this year. So that is a difference, uh, in the amount we're carrying forward of five point four million dollars. Pay as you go capital, so the major capital projects that we saw on the forecast slide, uh, we're at the five point five million dollar mark now. Because we have satisfied the set aside needed for E nine one one, the CAD records management system and, uh, for the sheriff's office. And the corrections network upgrades, so all those projects have had the funding fully transferred. Uh, so now we're down to the corrections, uh, chiller replacement and the sheriff helicopter, that's what makes up the five point five million dollar number there. And then you see your reserves are increasing by the four hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, as shown here. And your sustainable use of fund balance is kept flat, uh, at the five million dollar number. And that's what gets us to our twenty seven million dollar increase. This slide gives you a breakdown of the general fund proposed millage rate of the four point eight five zero six. So this will show that the constitutional offices account for one point seven three two six of our general fund millage rate. Public protection is the next highest area at one point four four zero six. Followed by the remaining county departments at one point two seven three seven. And then your subsidies and direct cost at point four, uh, zero three seven. And so same method we used last year, you take all of the revenue associated to that department. You decrease it, take it away from the budget, so you're left with what is funded by the general fund property tax, sales tax, state revenue sharing. That way it's equally applied to everybody after their revenue is, is, uh, taken away. This gives you a history of the general fund millage rate, uh, since fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. Uh, so you can see in fiscal year fourteen, we were at the rate of six point three one eight nine. Uh, we did stay flat with that rate for three years. In fiscal year seventeen, we did a partial rollback to six point one, stayed flat in fiscal year eighteen. And then every year since fiscal year eighteen, we have either been at rollback or partial rollback, um, in each of those years. So if you would have stayed flat at the six point one in fiscal year eighteen, that's a hundred and forty nine point nine million dollars in add to the alarm taxes. That would have been levied at that six point, six point one, uh, millage rate. So by, uh, reducing the rate annually, uh, the way we have, we have provided that, uh, tax savings back to the public. And then this gives you the general fund financial health, the fund is forecasted with a flat millage rate. Uh, continued rollback is not sustainable based on the current assumptions and fiscal cliff that we've already looked at. Uh, the VOTRAN subsidy increasing annually, it does get to sixteen point three million by fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, based on current growth assumptions. Uh, Sun Rail's expansion to Deland and assume maintenance responsibilities, uh, that is anticipated in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. And then we will have increased debt service payments, uh, for that Sun Rail, uh, expansion. So fiscal year twenty three, twenty four's impact is estimated at nine point, uh, seven to nine point nine million dollars, uh, increase over current funding levels. The budget increases, this is to, to George's point that he made a minute ago, they were kept really low for twenty two, twenty three. It can be somewhat concerning when we're faced with the inflation that we're looking at. Um, so rising inflation could impact the reserve levels if, um, if we're hit with expenses much greater than, uh, than what we're anticipating. And that takes us to the end.
Uh, Barbara Gertman.
Wow, that was a lot.
I see it.
But, um, I guess I'm, I'm just really pleased with how you've been able to, um, rethink, right, rethink the approach, the, the reallocations of, of, um, the dollars, the impact. And also be conservative through all the departments while managing the local inflation. And, um, I can see how we didn't get to rollback last time and being thoughtful for how we go forward this year. So I'm just, I'm pleased how you've approached it, how we've looked at this throughout the entire year. To really be able to, to talk about how to get here. Um, so I just, I just think you guys have done a great job with it. I think staff for holding things down over this past year and looking forward for how to, you know, how to do this at this time. Cause I think this year is so much even more critical for a lot of our, uh, residents today than a year ago. So, uh, I just thank you for all the hard work and, um, again, rethinking how we go forward. And that's certainly one of the, the challenges I've asked for is for us to think outside of what we've known. To where we can go, and I think you guys are, are leaders in that way and take us in the right.
Thank you, thank you. It is a team effort, a lot of, like you mentioned, the department division directors, the men and women there. And they did a great job of keeping their increases in check, so they deserve a lot of credit.
Wow, you must have done a, a, a perfect job. I, I'll just, I'll just add quickly to what, uh, Barb said. This is always a stressful time of the year for your, a, all the people in your office. The, a lot of work goes into this, this year. You've been required to do it with a, um, a crystal ball, I, I don't know, as you look down the, the road. So you're not, you're not going to get a lot of pushback from the council this year. And the reason is, is because you've created a budget that we're going into next year with, um, reserves that will protect us. For all the unknowns that could happen. Inflation continues to rise or even just stays the same if we are in a recession. As some people are already saying we are, that we'll see what the government tells us. We're, we're in a position now, I think, to protect not only the taxpayers, but the services that our community wants. So you have given us a way to protect that for the next year. I don't know what's going to happen the year after and, and neither do you. You're always conservative, so you're, you're prepared for the worst in the next two years and I think we, we would be remiss if, if we didn't approach it that way. Cause none of us, um, know the future. We do know from past history what has happened in the previous severe recession. When there was horrible cuts made and a lot of it to, to, uh, public safety. And this is not a commercial for our county manager. But if you look at, um, the slide on eight dash three nine. Since that, since we've had a change in county managers, the trend line has been down. And it, we're not in a situation where we're going to have dramatic cuts to firefighters in stations and, um, I hope, God willing, um, you know, that's, that should be the last thing we consider. But, um, along with the change of county manager came a change in the, um, CFO. And so this morning, I'm, I'm, I know this comes as a shock, but I'm pleased with what, with the work that you have, that you have done. I think it's, um, there's still a lot to consider and, and, and we're, you know, we continue to look at it. But it's, um, I'm, I'm concerned about what lies ahead in the next couple of years. And I think this is a very, uh, conservative approach that, that protects the taxpayers. This is not the year to give the taxpayers a tax increase because of what they might face. They're faced the same, uh, stresses that we do. And, um, so I, I think we're heading in the, in the right direction. Thank you for your hard work, thank you for your, your staff, Ryan, all of your staff that, um, has worked hard on this. This does not require a, uh, a vote. It was just for discussion. And that was the, uh, the bulk of what we needed to do today. That takes us to item nine, um, sponsorship request.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Honorable members of council, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. So I, agenda item number nine is a sponsorship request from the Deleon Springs Community Association. And, uh, they're asking for fifteen hundred dollars. We have not, uh, ever, this is the first time for them asking for a sponsorship. And this is for their festival to encourage the artistic talents of the local citizens, artists and craftsmen in, uh, West Volusia. The benefits will be, uh, to, to benefit children of low income families where artistic talent can be overlooked. While families try to keep a roof over their heads and food on the table.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Lowery. For the, uh, fifteen hundred dollar donation to the Deleon Springs Community Association. Before we vote on it, we had a member of the public that wanted to speak. Um, Amy Menizzi, do you, yes. I was gonna ask you if you still wanted to speak, but I think you see where it's going.
We don't necessarily need to speak, Amy Menizzi, Deleon Springs Community Association, we just want to.
Amy Menizzi, DeLeon Springs Community Association, we just want to put it on record that we thank Councilman Gertman for bringing this to our attention. It's our eighth annual event, and we didn't know that sponsorship was available from the county, so we thank you very much for that, and we're just here if you have any questions.
Any questions or discussions from the council? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item 10, another sponsorship request for the Foundation of Suicide Prevention for their Walk to Fight Suicides. This is interesting, I'm coming right after the Dr. Foltzer's.
Is, and this is on Sunday, October the 23rd at 7:00 PM. The sponsorship request is $1,500. They, this is the first time that they have asked for it, and the funds raised will allow the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to invest in research, create educational programs, advocate for the public policy, and support survivors of suicide loss.
Move approval.
Was it motion by Post? Okay. Motion to approve by Heather Post, second by Barb Gertman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And our final item 11, community events. Kevin Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. So for the community events update, what we have are two events to showcase. One is the CCA nearshore reef deployment, we've been talking about this. We don't have a date yet, it looks like it's going to be probably based on our communications with the contractor, it'll be the end of July. So a lot of factors that come into play here, but this is where we're going to be deploying those, you know, tens of thousands of pounds of reef material about two and three quarters miles off the area in Ponsonland. So we will communicate that once a date has been confirmed. The other thing to mention on July the 13th is Volusia Conys Beach Safety Ocean Rescue Inner Zone Competition. So beach safety has four service zones, and they're going to battle it out through the competitors' endurance, life-saving techniques, and speed and agility. So I think there's going to be some bragging rights that are in line for this event. It starts at 6:00 PM, and it will be livestreamed on the county's YouTube channel. And then also just a reminder for all public meetings, community events, and other activities, you can find them on the county council calendar, just by going to news and then checking the calendar. And I will mention that there's a lot of cool Volusia, explore Volusia programs this month that are, that are water-related. So with that, any questions? All right, thank you.
And that brings us to the final public participation, and we have one member of the public who would like to speak. I don't need to give you instructions, John, but John Nicholson. Your questions are resolved. Good. Do we want to take three minutes of silence just to? All right, we do have a member of the public, Alvin Mortimer.
Just to follow up to my comments earlier, Mr. Brower, you mentioned that I was mistaken. I've gotten with Mr. Captain and asserted that I'm not mistaken unless there is a mistake of you forwarding and some other department not following through. So if that clarified whatever, I wasn't accusing you of anything, I am asserting that I was not acknowledged. Public records, whether a record exists or not, I must be acknowledged in a reasonable amount of time, and if no record exists, then no record exists. But just leaving it open, and like, it's not fair, not right. That's all. But I stayed to contest your saying that it was inaccurate.
Okay.
I don't appreciate being, being.
I never said it was inaccurate. What I said, and I'll repeat it again, was that every request that you sent has been forwarded. I forwarded it to our legal staff. Every email we get is public record, and that's the public record, but it has all gone to our legal staff.
He advised me that IT will do an audit or whatever's needed to resolve the issue, because I was not acknowledged, and that's the problem.
Okay.
And that's where our disagreement obviously is at. Thank you.
One of the county attorneys, Mike, Michael, oh, Heather.
I did respond to Mortimer's, that you forwarded. I did receive it, I have shared that response with Mr. Captain, so I believe in Mr. Mortimer again today, but there was a response to that request.
Thank you. Okay, County Manager? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First thing, just a reminder that the next meeting, we touched on it a minute ago, but it is where we will be setting the final high trim, the highest it can be. And then also, of course, you'll be getting, you know, the official budget at that meeting, so just as an idea of the timeframe. Next, I just wanted to publicly thank our beach team, which is, consists of, you know, Beach Patrol and Coastal, is they, I think, did an old man's job facing the onslaught of visitors this weekend, and, you know, worked around some weather issues. And of course, unlike some other holidays, this one often goes late into the night as we do have the issue of fireworks. I know we'd made over 1,300 contacts with people trying to be educational in our approach that fireworks, while they are legal in other areas of the county, they are not legal on the beach. So we put out extra signage this year, I think that helped out. I have one comment from a veteran Beach Patrol person that they saw a lot less than, I know it's anecdotal, but they particularly saw a lot less than what we've seen in other years. So we are working on it, but they do, you know, there's a limited number of people and a lot of people that are along that area. But I think they did a great job, and they were out there early this morning, along with a lot of volunteers that Jessica has put together, a great team out there to make sure we're all cleaned up. So I just want to thank them and the Beach Patrol guys. County Attorney?
Yes, sir. July 9th, which is a Saturday, so it will fall until Monday, so next Monday would be the deadline for West Volusia Hospital Authority Father Appeal on the trial court's order in the county's favor on the Medicaid contribution issue, so we'll keep you updated. And the governor now has acted on all the outstanding bills, so we'll be sending you an updated legislative report to close out this session. Thank you.
Thank you. And for County Council, Billy Wheeler is not here, and without talking about her personal business, I think it's, it is proper to let her know that the council and staff that are keeping her and her family in our prayers as she deals with Family Matters. Barb Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing today, hope everyone had a safe holiday, and yeah, good meeting, I thank you.
Ben Johnson. Dr. Lowery. Heather Post.
Thank you. So I just, I wanted to make sure and mention, I know that there's some members of the public who are not aware of why I've been absent for three months, basically. But just so everybody's on the same page, I fell down a flight of stairs in the county building April 5th, and have just been recovering and dealing with a number of things with my limbs. So very glad to be back today, but it's very unfortunate that we missed the growth management workshop. I certainly hope that we're going to have some further discussions on that coming up, but would love to discuss a number of things, but just wanted to ensure that the public fully understood that I've always been in 110%, and I'm back today, so thanks so much for everyone who reached out.
And that leaves me, and I'll just pick up on, on George and what you said about the beach, since we did have discussion, as you know, we, I had received a number of both complaints and inquiries about how we were managing the beach as far as vehicular access because of soft sand areas, and I think y'all were down there during the weekend. I went down on Sunday, but I went on the, probably mid Daytona, maybe northern side of Daytona, and drove the beach where it was nice and hard, but as it turns out, there was a lifeguard, Beach Patrol officer approaching us, so I asked my wife, I wasn't driving, I asked her to stop and just wave him down. Fortunately, he doesn't know who I am, I don't ever use my, you know, my title when I talk to somebody about that. I just asked him, you know, if, I said, I, you know, I hear there's been a lot of complaints about beach access, where are the issues? He couldn't have been more helpful and professional, told me where he knew there was patches of soft sand, but that they were being able to adjust the traffic away from that, and that was the concern. You know, it's the busiest, maybe the busiest weekend of the year for the beach, and we want everybody to be able to enjoy it, the retailers to benefit from it, but most of our residents to be able to enjoy it, and I don't know, for those of you that received emails of complaints, if you also received the emails of saying, well done at the end, but I know I did. I got those, and phone calls saying, you know, well done, and even some social media posts saying that it turned out well. So it's, it's hard when you're dealing with the ocean and a changing environment, and it can change daily. I appreciate all the efforts that were done, Andy, and your, to your entire staff, so that's all that, that I, well, one other thing, the beach, and I'll talk to the staff privately about this, but I've asked to come down and agreed to go to the Plaza Drive, not the Plaza Motel approach, but the Plaza Drive where we're doing some construction to look at issues that they have there, so we can talk about that after the meeting. If that's all from council, then we will be adjourned at 12:26. Thank you very much.